Meeting on the city of Dexter. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to begin. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance. Bonnie, if you would please lead us. I would appreciate it. Please call the roll.
Aldag here. Griffin here. Hubbard here. Michelle's.
Present.
Schlaf.
Yeah.
Semi Pharaoh.
Here.
Kio.
Here.
Bruterly absent Keating.
Here.
Malik absent.
Thank you. Item C on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from our city council meeting on February twenty six, twenty twenty four. There's someone who would like to make a motion to approve the minutes. I'll make that motion. Moved by Dan. Second.
Second.
Second by one, thank you. Dan, any comments on the meetings? You know, thank you. Why? Other council members? Zach?
Much as I love the airing of grievances is one of the three core elements of Festivus. Instead of without airing of grievances, it should be without redress of grievances.
I'm sorry. Can you? Speak that in like plain.
Yes, so.
Section are we on?
Under Michelle's comments, council member comments. Says additionally, express concern with moving forward on council matters without airing grievances. It should be without redress of grievances.
Thank you.
The other comments? Okay. Please call the vote to approve the minutes with the one correction.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Griffin, yes. Semi Pharaohs?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. We are down to prearranged participation. And Ron Miller and J D Boydston, representing friends of Mill Creek, have asked for ten minutes to speak to us this evening. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Ron Miller, I live at seven, six, five, four, Forest Street in Dexter. And I wanted to address you this evening in relationship to the motion that was passed by. Voted on by city council at the February twenty sixth meeting. That was a motion proposed by Mr. Semifaro. And seconded by. To add language to the charter amendment proposal to show. Non-support or lack of support for the. Charter amendment as an addendum to the ballot initiative. I. And also to address the suggested proposed change in the ballot language. And I, I will first just mention that the. If the suggested that the. Simply add that preface to the amendment was not in violation of the. Of the. Guidelines or proposing. And maybe federal guidelines opposed to using public resources money, I think as your lawyer pointed out, it was. It was really money and or resources. I would contend that because it was in the minutes. And you stated your non-support or lack of support specifically the word to choose that this does not support the. Council Dexter Council is not in support of the charter amendment. Would actually be a violation. It does show prejudice. And I remember when I spoke before you that evening, I indicated that I saw no reason for you. One, not to go ahead and submit it onto the state. As a question. And and to delay that and or to do so unanimously without prejudice. And I felt like. What you succeeded in doing in that motion is prejudice the vote by publishing it on your website. It's not supported. I'm more concerned by. Choosing to change the language of the ballot. Initiative to a degree that I think does impact greatly the intent of the proposal. And if I may read from the suggested. Change, I think it was on the minutes from. Page one twelve of the twenty-six minutes. The. The resolution. That the city. The city owned public land bounded by Alpine Street, Main Street, Mill Creek and the railroad shall be retained in public ownership. In perpetuity and shall be. Both set aside for the devoted and devoted to active recreation, passive recreation or both. That was the language that was submitted. To the council and we had the signatures for approval. What the proposed language says is. Shall the Dexter City Charter be amended to insert language? Excuse me, relating to the city-owned land bounded by Alpine Street, Main Street, Mill Creek and the railroad. To retain the land in public ownership. In perpetuity and devote the land to active recreation, positive recreation or both. And yes or no? And I would say by permitting the word set aside, you do indeed change the intent of the language. It has been suggested that somehow this issue is not. We're suggesting it is about the parks. And it has been suggested that no, it's about the fire station. It's about removing the fire station from that location. I would like to say that. By your four to three vote. The council basically made this issue about the parks specifically. And as you get further along in the design, and I know you will be talking about design issues tonight, there will be several things that might very well impact. The park directly. And potentially could remove some land and the way people access that park. And I think our intent all along was to have at least. Council step back from this issue, give them a month and take another look at it, both on the amount of resources. And what a fire station on that particular piece of property. Impacts the community at large, both in regards to the park itself. And to even frankly, future development. It is going to occur along park land, park lands. I think we've done a tremendous job. You have all done a tremendous job of maintaining that a beautiful parkway with many other proposed additions. Including a trailhead and whatever and and. Our intent with this charter amendment was really to keep that area open for something that actually brings. A lot of people to this community, has a potential of being developed more successfully. And I fear that a fire station at that particular all along is a significant impediment. To the future development of that, that land down there. I mean. I think there is really no reason, you also. Postponed this decision until, you know, technically one day before it has an opportunity to get and meet the timeframe. To get into the attorney general's office and the governor's office. For approval. I still have seen nothing to indicate why you proceed to delay this process when you can simply take the language as proposed. Add the one qualification that needed addressing, which is turn it into a ballot question. Which you did. But you've now changed two different things about it. Added a preface. It indicates your non-support and you've. Chosen to take out, I think, very key words to the issue that I think changes the intent. So I would ask that you give yourself, if you're going to give yourself time, give yourself time to think about the implications of as you move forward on this. The cost implications. As well as the implications addressing the park and the use of that land down downtown. And and. See if there might. Lots be better choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Welcome.
J D Boydston, six, nine, five, one, Volokh Drive. And first I want to say thank you to all the city council members for serving and for the staff for all the work you do. To tag on to what Ron said, first of all, the language of removing the set aside. As a member of the committee and a petition circulator, I view that language as very significant as well. It was important when we drafted it. And I'm. Trying to understand and never heard a reason why it was actually removed. And the only reasons the language had to be changed was because it wasn't raised as a question. And you did that, but it could have been more simple, just say, shall the city charter be amended? To add the following language and no other words in the body would have had to be changed. And the only other reason to change is if there were. Errors or it was unclear. Or if it had gone over a hundred words. It's not, there were no errors, nothing about that. And obviously it's totally not over a hundred words. So I'm asking for council and our staff to actually explain in their discussions. Why that language was removed? If was there a specific reason or was it just when it was being typed, it got omitted? And if it was, if that's the reason. Then it could be simply added back. And then on to. The language of that I think does prejudice. This towards the the public about adding the language. In the resolution. I want to read a couple, Michigan Municipal League, which I'm assuming city council, city is a member of, but even if they're not, they have a free. Document on the website, which is. Has a section about campaign finance, finance acts, dos and don'ts. And under the don'ts, it says, don't use city or village funds, municipal-owned office space or other property. Expressly advocate a vote for or against a candidate or candidate or ballot question. Expressly advocate means advocate means to state support for the passage or defeat of a ballot question or the election or defeat of a candidate. And then two, don't use your municipal website to expressly advocate only for or against one candidate, one slate of candidates. Or one side of a ballot question. Now I want to read a couple sample ballot languages and see if these are resolution languages, see if these makes, you know, what you think of this. Whereas the board does not support the candidacy of Joe Biden. Whereas the. This body does not support the candidacy of Donald Trump. Or whereas this committee does not support Michigan's two thousand twenty-two statewide proposal to. A proposal to amend the state constitution and add provisions regarding. Elections. Stop and think. You, do any of these sound like they would be appropriate for? A municipality to make a, make a resolution on. And vote on that and approve that. Based on what the M L says. I, you, the answer would be no, it would be an inappropriate use of the city council's time and to do so. Well, what about this language? The Dexter City Council does not support the proposed amendment. And that was specifically referring to the language that we're talking about, the aforementioned citizen-initiated ballot proposal regarding the park space where the park. That Ron was talking about. So. That's the same thing. It was part of a larger resolution, but if it doesn't stand up on its own, why would it be appropriate in a larger resolution? And I believe it. They all, what do these have in common? First three, like you said, I just. I made those out. I didn't find those in language, but but it gets the point across that the language that the city council adopted. Is not appropriate under. But the Michigan Municipal League dos and don'ts, or don'ts. For the campaign finance laws. So I encourage council to revisit. The resolution and add back set aside language, change that and also remove this language, this prejudice language. And also, the other issue is, as it says, you're not supposed to publish anything that advocates for or against. A proposal ballot measure on your website and by having the minutes and the council. You know, the recording, everything, it's all out there that the council has expressly advocated against it. And then also to add the agenda, you know. You're discussing the direction of the fire department. And the transit. So far, you're very much over budget and there are certain costs on this, on the. That are associated with it that are specific to that site downtown. That you wouldn't have an alternate site. So I asked the council to take, take a step back and reconsider whether it could be done at an alternate site. And also that would allow the park to be expanded. Now that is one of our major, that's our major goal is. By not having the fire department there. You, you can expand the parks, which like I said, like Ron said, you've done, the city has done such a great job building these parks. They're, they're a huge attraction and huge asset to this.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thanks for coming to the meeting tonight. Okay, we are down to non-arranged participation. Joe?
I apologize, but so I specifically was referred to as making motion. And twice. Mr. Miller and Mr. Boydston referred to the language that was in the motion. And both of them. Took. The language in the motion out of context. The, the line that was added is whereas Dexter City Council by the approval of this resolution. Does not support the proposed amendment, but recognizes the legal obligation to adopt the ballot language. I specifically said when we were at the table. That that language was put in there because we should not be being seen as supportive or opposing this particular. Ballot language. And actually I talked to Lucas from M Life later that week. I don't think that he read through that because he thought that the council was supporting the ballot amendment. When we passed the resolution because he didn't read that. So I mean, even though we made the effort to say we're not supporting and we're not opposing. Message still didn't get across. So I understand the consternation, but. The language has to be taken in total, not. In part.
Thank you.
The person who is seconded that I would. Agree with all of that also. I wouldn't have voted for it if I didn't think that was neutral. I mean, I made it very clear. In that meeting. That we as individual council members. Have. Rights. All the rights to go around and say whatever we want about this petition or whatever we. Or say nothing about it. But that was not. That was not meant to be a vote against this. It was meant to say, we as a body. Don't feel one way or the other. And it's very complicated because there are two people at this table who brought. Who created this. So I don't know how to. Make. How to, how to sit here and feel like I'm being told I'm not being neutral when it was never neutral in the first place. And all I said in that, like after I approved this was we are all allowed to say whatever we want to say. And we're still allowed to do that regardless of this language. And. I don't know. I could say more, but I won't.
Okay, I'm going to move on to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record and you have five minutes. We look forward to hearing.
And I'm brought here this evening by the. Sometimes this evening, although. Accessibility funding side for the place structure in Long Creek Park. It's a subject that I raised here some months ago. Having seen the initial drawings that looked deeply inaccessible. So I want to thank council for moving forward on that. And working on providing a place structure that everybody can use. I'm concerned. That the scope is rather limited. That it is just that one place structure in that one park aimed at one demographic. There are accessibility issues throughout our city parks. And along the border to border trail that goes through our community. As far as seating. And access. Go that are not being addressed by this. And rather than. Proceeding with a very narrow, we prosper funds to improve accessibility in our community. I think it'd be a shame to lose this opportunity. To address the range of issues that exist for people of all ages. And as a user of our parks, I experience this all the time, even a person with disabilities. And getting into and out of some of our parks in some directions can be rather challenging. And sitting down and standing up on the limited number of seating surfaces that are provided. And also challenging. A gazebo and community park is not accessible. And I'd be happy to go into more detail. I know there isn't enough time and this is probably quite the right way to do it. But I am concerned that this very narrow application is being made, although I applaud the application itself, but it is terrific. I just don't want to see us wasting the opportunity. To fix all the problems here.
Thank you for coming tonight, Todd. Is there anyone else? Jamie?
If we're going to continue to take comments during. This time, I just wanted to offer up to Mr. Austin a couple, a couple of clarifying points. I appreciate your comments. And I'm sure some member of staff could get back to you with greater clarification, but as somebody on parks, I just wanted to let you know. That there is a broader initiative to improve the accessibility of all of the parks. And I think what could be helpful is if you submitted a list of specifics, because I think at different times on the Parks and Rec Commission. We haven't quite known what to prioritize for smaller improvements at the other parks. So this major effort at Mill Creek Playground was really driven by wanting to do the playground and then seeing this grant opportunity. So it fits well with that goal, but I totally appreciate what you're saying and that is on parks radar. We've just kind of been picking them off bit by bit. And so it's. I would appreciate your particular input on that. And I just haven't been able to reach out to you to ask you for that. So. However, you want to communicate that to staff or other members on parks, we would welcome that for sure.
I appreciate that. That's great to hear. Yeah, communication could be improved. After our basis issue initially, I was told that it's going to be turned over to our. Standard consultants to do an eighty-eight analysis. I never heard another word about it. I played a team before council some months later. Nobody reached out to share the report or invite me to that council meeting. So yeah, I think there's an opportunity to more broadly and. Engage people with disabilities in our community about how we're spending their money to improve accessibility for people with disabilities. Because I've not seen any September.
If you emailed me, I'd be happy to.
Are there others in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Under non-arranged. Please state your name and address for the record and remember we have five minutes.
Jeremy Haley at twenty-two fifty Millburn Ave.
Hi Jeremy.
Good seeing everybody again. A couple issues I have. Roundabout. The one sign, first roundabout going up Southbound and Baker. Sign that says Dan Boy on it, the rectangular part. It's right at height where it can take off somebody's head on a bike. Right? Now, if you're going one way and the traffic's coming at you, you're not going to see it and. It's a headhunter. Something waiting to happen. And people going in the roundabout, coming up Baker, the first one right around Shield and. Walkabout Creek entrance. People coming. Northbound. They fly. They, they fly like nothing else. And because they know if they can get up to the tail of that person that's ahead of them. It stops and prevents anybody else from entering that. Walkabout route, run, run. Which I've been there a few times, which I think is really, and can they consider it selfish and rude though? Because you can look at their faces. And you can tell they don't care. My suggestion would be is put multiple speed bumps before they're just falling down. And one right before. The, you know. Walk thing you go through. Because right now, if anybody were to try to walk through there, they'd probably get hit. In an instant, because nobody cares. And we need per turns. Signs for people use turn signals. I've already been in the car with multiple people. Going in Walkabout Creek. No turn signal on it, you ask them. Didn't make the left turn? No, I'm in circle. It's absolutely nonsense. Circles composed of three hundred sixty degrees, four ninety degree turns. So they are making a left turn. I don't know if the geometric shape messes people up. But a lot of people don't use turn signals. Especially the kids, the kids come off, they come off, make that left. I've seen four or five of them. Tailgate each other through there, but no turn. Turn signals on, making a left going northbound on Baker. Horrible. Don't need to do the same thing if one of masks, how fast people come down there. Kind of make them at least three foot wide, inches, eight inches high at the top. So people hit them and they had a speed, yeah. And I like to see what the total is, how many signs you guys had replaced so far along that roundabout from the people been hitting it. I mean, that's the cost to taxpayers going to keep adding up. And next sign is where the Dexter Wellness Center is, the big concrete sign. I don't come back on that side of the road no more, except after hopefully years of experiencing waving. Gentle high to people. After seeing their front tires are permanently stopped on the sidewalk and they look at you go. You know, that's the action of waiting to happen. Because you can't, there's no clearing until you get up at that point, if you're. One of the right people, if you, if I urge you to stand there and look. People, when they pull up, they don't look to them. They look to the left, so it's from the left. So if you're coming on a sidewalk, little kid, under three foot tall, that hill and all that's going. It'll be whacked. It hasn't happened yet. But with what's coming to that wellness center, what it's being changed into. And the more capacity of people going, coming, going out of there, increasing. It's increasing that chance and lightning only needs a strike once. And the next thing I have. Is, is. I still have an issue. With the home project going on. If something really doesn't. You know, taste right. You know, because. What's happening is that means any outside source, outside entity coming, get the city money for, say, hey. Need this and we want this pretty much. And I just urge you to look into Michigan Penal Code sections seven, five, zero dot one, one, seven. And seven, five, zero dot one, one, eight. Especially one, one, eight. Especially states and outside entity. Giving anything. To persuade a decision, vote, anything. You take that off the table. You know, you wouldn't approve the project. If Dexter City wants it done, the city needs to do it. With its own money. And let the ballot become. Because I'm right now looking for a house. As far as I know. My concern for water. Is from my house. Do the road. I'm not going to any city or township and go, hey. I want this, so here's money, listen, let's get this done. That is not how it works. If the infrastructure is not there. It's not there. You don't have the money. As I always told my kid, if you don't have the money, you get out and earn it. Just don't buy it. And I'll just leave it at that because you know, that is my concern, checking those penal codes. And that talks about government employees, that's all of you. I'm concerned. Is, and on top of that. Wasn't there at one time? A plan to put some kind of. Other road in to bypass the traffic coming into downtown. And if there ever was a plan and it got shot down. For any reason. Or say, hey, we like to keep it that way to keep the traffic. And now what you're dealing with is chaos. I asked for that just alone, that one mistake. And not another one is. How many years did that bridge go? You know. Go mismeasured and people keep wondering why so many people get hit in it and then, oh yeah, it's fish master. Put more torque, more training on everything. Put a pause break, take a step back and really decide what you guys want. You know, I'm not always going to be here to be a thorn in your side, because I know not, not all of you like me. But I do respect the positions you guys hold and what you guys can do to and for the city. Just the other day, you're living outside a super fun site. I don't know if you know what that means. Horse per mile, one four day oxen underground. If that was above ground and on the ground. Everybody in that whole horse per mile. If that was above ground and on the ground, everybody in that whole horse per miles population would be evacuated. All right. And I know that's a concern of yours, because you got five wells. It just, you have to think about things in more than the long term sense, please. As the actions you take, how they affect future. So and so like bypass road that you could have done, but it's not and will both never, ever get done. And so now you have to deal with. You got a business owner for the town or not home, but the landowner going to all the businesses going, hey, wouldn't you like to have more people move down here? Well, to help the business, of course, we don't say, yes, or idiots to say no. Promise you got those people you want to move there? Do you want them as residents or as economic residents, so they live there, so therefore they're going to want to walk to the restaurants and eat? As anybody said, hey, let's take a survey, the people in the new building, to see how many of those people actually walked downtown to those restaurants now. So we can project what a new one might be. All good information you all need. I don't know if you did that. But to try to cram more people in here and expect that economic rise of the businesses is absurd. More people doesn't mean more money. This means more problems, more people. I'll just leave it at that. And thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, Jeremy. Be happy to continue the discussion.
One thing regarding the discussion, I noticed in, I know you have a laundry list of potential funding sources and one of them was Millet, also some, and I would just please ask you do not, should we come back to the city residents additional village, the city taxes are already extremely high and obviously you've already come to us once for that. So I just wanted to encourage you not, not to, to put that off the table. Keep that as, as an actual find a way, I know you're looking for ways to cut the costs and and others, other sources, but please don't ask for extra taxes. But also I wanted to um reply to Tupper. And Joe regarding the, the language, I see it just the opposite. Adding that language in, if, if you had, if you were required to put a, I know you're not required to put candidates on the ballot and and do for resolution, but if you added the language that said we realize our legal obligation to put this slate of candidates on the ballot, but we don't approve this candidate, this candidate, this candidate. That'd be the same kind of language. You're, you're actually, it was, it was not in the, the draft language, which was the standard language that provided by staff. And then you decided to add it. And I think as far as it's, it's saying that the whole council doesn't approve. But you know, there's members that, you know, don't approve of it. And as far as voicing your public, your, your personal opinion, yes, you can do that. That's where you would, after the fact, personally voice your disapproval of it, but not on a public vote.
Thanks JD. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak under non arranged? Is there anyone online that would like to speak under non arranged? If so, please use the raise hand feature. Josh, if you'll help me monitor. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands go up, so we'll conclude the non arranged, the first non arranged portion of our agenda. Uh, moving along to item F. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest this evening? None noted at this time. Uh, we are down to item G, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
We can now, um, all bag. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Schlaf. I just have one question. The agenda that was posted had M four and M five as consideration items, but the packet says discussion. What was the intent? Supposed to be consideration?
Their consideration.
Thank, thank you.
Zach? I'd like to, I have some questions on K two. I'd like to discuss, I have some also on K four, but I'll try my best to do that during the community development record portion, but um if they're too big, then they can be pulled off before it becomes a consideration item under the consent.
Okay, so right now we're moving K two to M six? Okay, any further comments, questions on the agenda? Please call the vote to approve the agenda with moving K two to M six.
Schlaf?
Yeah.
Hubbard, who's Aldag?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. We are down to public hearings. We have a public hearing this evening. Um, we are considering, considering an application uh for Mill Creek Park enhancements. Uh, and we have an application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund. And that is the topic of the public hearing. So I would like to open the public hearing um at seven thirty-six and ask if there's any public that would like to speak on the topic of uh a resolution uh for an application to the MDNR. We are, just to, to give a little bit of background, the anticipated project cost is around six hundred thousand. The application is um being sought after for about four hundred thousand of that, so two, two thirds of the project price or the anticipated project price, I should say, uh with a um general fund support from the city for two hundred thousand dollars. Um, the city has been successful in getting some of these in the past. Uh, we don't get them every time. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't keep trying. And I applaud the staff for the Parks Commission for one, to go after this. Is there anyone online that would like to speak as part of the public hearing for the um application to the trust fund? Thatcher, you seeing any hands go up? I am not. Okay, then we'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-seven. Yes, Todd, did you raise your hand? I'm sorry.
These are the packet.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
A technical note is the packet link in a website is still the last council meeting I've ever read the one since. This is council meeting packet is not there, so I found out all I have sent for a number of months. When I go, when I click on that link, I'm getting the last one. So my people got speed that.
Okay, thanks for letting us know that. We'll have to look into that. But yes, this, what you're seeing on the screen is part of the packet and what was um.
The packet is correctly linked for this meeting.
You getting the red button? Okay, just.
I think sometimes what happens is that the beginning of our packet is the minutes from our previous meeting. So the first date you'll pretty much always see in a packet will be the date of the minutes. Um, I know other people have been confused by that. So you open the link and the, that, you know, the name is, yeah, just keep scrolling, because the first couple pages will be the minutes from our previous meeting. So this, that image should be on page eleven of the packet.
Okay, so it's um typical after a public hearing, open, closing that we uh council has the option for consideration of the uh, the item that we did the public hearing on. Um, there is a proposed resolution in the packet on page twelve and thirteen. Would someone like to make the motion to approve the MTF grant application? Joe?
Uh, I knew we approved the resolution on page twelve and thirteen in the packet for the approval of the M, the MDNR Trust Fund Grant Application for Mill Creek Park Enhancements.
A second.
Thank you both. Discussion by council?
Zach? Yeah, this is a, a technical question. Depending on, on what happens with the design of the fire station later on, there's this layout here could be significantly impacted by upwards of twenty to, to forty feet into the playground area. Is the state going to be upset if we have that larger shrinkage as part of this grant?
So um I, I, I wouldn't say that, that this is the I wouldn't say this, this is the final um sc- scope of, of, of what is actually going to be installed. Um, I mean, you, you know, that there's a general concept of the, the types of materials and that sort of thing that we're looking for, but um, there isn't a detailed breakdown of uh we're looking for this specific piece of accessible equipment, uh, this specific place structure. So I, I, I think there, there is still some flexibility as we move to the, the application.
Okay, so you, you answered side question I asked. So I am, I do acknowledge that this was likely to wiggle around a bit and that will not get us penalties from the state if we significantly shrink what we show them as part of our grant.
Correct. Yeah, so they're, they're, they're looking at bigger picture than than the specific details of, of, of what's on, on this particular rendering.
All right, I, I do have a couple of comments. This is the first time I've seen this design. The, the sidewalk that loops around the hillside. Um, it really ought to respond to the trees that are shown there. It kind of just looks like it's running straight through the root zone. That's a good way to destroy sidewalks and kill trees, so ought to have a little more wiggle to it. I would also highly recommend that it line up with the, the path to the um the patio at the library. It does a really weird angle there and especially if the slides there, all the kids are going to be running up the grass anyways. Um, also the, the wiggle that's showing there near the river. We don't want to touch more soil than we need to. In the floodplain, it triggers a lot of permits and a lot of potential mitigation. Um, so that probably should remain as straight as it is. I'd also raise the question of, this is perhaps our most challenging park area for folks with disabilities to get to. You can't walk down from Alpine. You either have to come down and get there when there's a parking space. If you're coming down legally from the sidewalk, you have to go across Main Street and do the whole serpentine loop and come back through. Um, it's, it's tough to put our most accessible park play structure in our least accessible park. That's all.
So? Yeah, in terms of accessibility, I think um one thing that I have mentioned in the past and I would like um to see it um discussed, especially if the, you know, design goes to, to parks and details is the accessibility of the play structure um itself. You know, we, we really talk about how to get to the park, how to go around the park seating area and such, which I completely agree with all of that, but there are some um play components of play structure that are accessible for children that require accessibility as well. And I would like that um conversation at parks um or, or generally that to be considered as well.
Wow.
Um, following up on that, I mean, we had a, we had a goal setting session here two days ago. And we did talk about accessibility of the park as it relates to the ongoing fire station project and the ongoing discussion about improving the park and play structure. None of this is happening in a vacuum. And we're definitely considering it all. I know that as I consider different options for the fire station and our budget. A priority for me still is to keep going forward with the discussion we've been having for a couple of years about improving the park and improving accessibility of the park. The two things are not the same to me. I mean, we're doing both and they've got to work together. That's kind of the way I see it. And as a side note, and I know this isn't really relevant, but when I was, when I was like a little kid, long before Mill Creek Park was renovated into what it is now, I remember being taken there by my babysitter and sometimes by my parents. And that place scared the crap out of me. I don't know why. I think it was like the train and the lack of like development of the park. And it's just a very different place now. And I have no intention of going backward on that.
Thank you. I, I do um, I do think it's important to keep the visual in front of uh this body as well as the public, though. Um, you know, the, the, there's been a lot of talk about the fire station uh and the improvements made there. It would be nice if we could update this to, to be real, as it relates to maybe a future decision we're going to make on what the fire station looks like, but to get, to get some real sense of scale. Um, Zach has a good comment about, you know, where the sidewalk should connect the opposite of the library one. Uh, we should be showing what's existing, giving reference to what's around it, whether it's the farmer's market or the, the border to border trail. Uh, there's a county easement through there for the trail, you know, affects that space. Um, it's always been a park and it's always intended to be a park. And, and, and for those uses. Um, you know, in, in that view there, there's active areas planned and there's passive areas on the other side of the path. Um, but I think, I think it's important to get that vision out there to show people what the intent is. I think you commented on your report about, or maybe it's at the work session about budgeting for it and you know, twenty twenty-five, or maybe it's even at this rate also. Few places we've seen that. Uh, it just doesn't make any sense to do it until after we've disturbed the area um and complete the the fire station project, so. Um, but I appreciate you sharing that. I, I applaud the the staff and the Parks Commission for wanting to go after funding. Um, we'll see if we're you know, lucky enough to, it's lucky, you know, some or all, they, they do have the ability to award less than four hundred thousand, even though we're asking for the maximum, but might as well ask, doesn't hurt to ask. Okay. Sergeant, please call the vote. Uh, we have a motion by Southern Pharaoh, a second by Hubbard, approve the application on page twelve and thirteen.
Aldag?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, six to one. Um, we'll move down to item I in the packet. We have our upcoming meeting list on page fifteen. Is there any comments or updates on the meeting calendar? Seeing none, we'll keep going. Our first report tonight is from our Public Services Superintendent. Tim, thanks for being here. How are you?
Good. How's it? How's everybody tonight?
Yeah, good.
So obviously you got a tweet report in front of you. Um, feeling questions right now. Also I have a couple of things I want to add to me.
What?
Um, I see your third bullet here in your report, fixed flag caught in the tree. I assume that means in Monument Park?
Yes.
Okay, great, because I did have a couple residents reach out to me and say that that needed to be resolved, so thank, thank you for taking care of that.
Yeah, in fact, I think it happened again.
Thanks for keeping it, and making sure that it's
Zach? Are we able to do anything with the Dan Boy Widowmaker sign? Or can we reach out to the county if that's theirs?
It would be theirs, but I can, yeah, definitely.
Uh, next question is from Information General. When is the dog drinking fountain be turned on this spring? We have a date yet?
No, I, I had to talk with, uh, what, see when it was exactly. I'm not sure. It usually waits to, obviously it's this is at usual weather, so, you know, and you still have cold nights and you don't want to put something out there with water. It's, you know, when it's still twenty-eight degrees outside. Imagine once it's, uh, we get some good weather where it's consistently above thirty-two for a certain year, certain amount of time. So, but I can't find that.
Well, this is more of a question for Justin as a follow-up to that, because I did try to use that the other day. Um, whenever that is turned on, can we get that to be put in the email? The citywide, so it acknowledges there and is ready for our dogs.
Laura, still yours?
Um, so you know, but all the uh Christmas lights and decorations came down, are in put away. I get that put away, finished up today. Um, we just got done with the cleaning of well one in the park. And the Ryan Drive, I should say, and they TVed it today. It looks really, really, really good. For being twenty-some years old, the screen is in perfect condition, so.
Um, it's great, I talked to the gentleman about CDL training, it's looking like either the end of this month or beginning next month, sounds like he's extremely busy now that he can travel.
Um, so he said that he'd be getting home at the end of the month, I don't know, with that moving forward, I have two people that will be doing. That type of training, where it's gonna be involved, heavily involved, so. And then they will be going to High Service Pump Number One, and the, uh, our renewable plants on Thursday.
Questions for Tim? Thank you again for being here tonight. Next up is our Community Development Manager, Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, how's council this evening?
You're doing well.
Excellent. You've got my report in front of you before I go into our dates, if you have any questions.
A lot of pages in contract. Uh, for the. Master Plan Amendment, uh, the forty-five thousand is coming from the fifty thousand grant we got for housing. Do we know what's happening with the other five thousand?
It is a buffer in case. We end up having to go over.
All right, and then a couple of the elements in here, the small area plan design workshops.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for thirty forty-five and Second Street.
Mm-hmm.
Are those going to be solely housing focused, and if not, are we able to use grant money for housing towards non-housing master design work?
It's a, it's a grant to update. The, or to amend the master plan, the primary focus is. Excuse me, is, um. Is the, uh. Facilitation of housing. But the primary foundation being laid for this one is a much more robust public engagement. And the, the degree as to which these design workshops. Will, will take place, still has to be figured out. This is going to be a combination of City Council, Planning Commission, DDA, that'll be that kickoff meeting. Excuse me, but because this DDA is in the process of updating their strategic plan. With, they will work with Planning Commission and City Council. Their consultant will work with Carlisle Wartman to get this. Public engagement for housing.
Okay, I guess I'll ask it another way. If it comes back that the small area plan design workshops from members of the public and all those folks say. We want this area developed for commercial, because it's next to the railroad track and we want, we just want a bunch of commercial stuff there. Are we still okay having used the housing grant money for that? Or will we need to come up with extra money to fund that portion?
Um, I think we're going to be fine with it.
Okay.
But it helped me, you said by the railroad tracks, and so I was thinking thirty-fourty-five Broad Street and then.
Yeah, this, this includes thirty forty-five and Second Street. All right, thank you. Joe?
For the, um, seven thousand one Dexter and Arbor, the, um. Renovable appliances. So on the. Drawings for the parking lot, the outer portion of the parking lot closest to Dexter and Arbor Road, it. Has an arrow next to it that says potential development lot, or potential something, lot development, yeah, outlet.
Right.
So is. Are they saying they're using that parking area for this?
No, what they're, what they're, what they have shown on that plan, and it's not part of the specific request. It's one that they may amend with later, um, to have an outlet developed there, like the larger portion to the. West, uh, has two outlets that are approved as part of the P U B.
Okay, and, uh. I've not been in that parking lot in a long time, since probably Noble Appliances opened. But it hadn't been redone at that time.
They have made some improvements to different sections, that portion that's closest to the road is that portion that it hasn't been. Um, but one of the things that, um. Stat, in conjunction with Megan, during a phone call with them, encouraged them to do was. To look at. Ways to potentially get that redeveloped. Um. They haven't, they have a problem being able to. Keep up with the maintenance. And. Not having the money to do something isn't a. Isn't a, um, get out of jail free. When it comes to the enforcement, so we tried to give them ways to. Find a way to help them succeed there. Um, but also something that would benefit the city, and that's why it's looking, it has that potential for an outlet.
So, but specifically for the parking that's for that, this new proposal, the parking between the building and. The drive that divides the.
They have made improvements there, they, they redid the drive. Last year.
Okay.
Oh, and they have made improvements on the other.
Okay, thank you.
Well, sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
Laura, still yours?
Okay, so in addition to, um. To my report, there was a. Excuse me, update and supplement, um, uh, Planning Commission did consider. What the expedited rezoning would be for the Dexter Community Schools parcel at twenty-five oh five Bigfoot Road. That requires the, um, master plan amendment first, they initiated that at their February meeting. They discussed the, um, the appropriate land use classifications. And, um, based on what the housing goal is, or that they feel is the appropriate one. They have recommended to City Council, the Village One, um, future. Future land use designation, um, and, uh, recommended that. City Council distribute that, we will get that. Um, for consideration at your March twenty-fifth meeting. Um, the other thing was period, uh, spaces, they had special land use of, um. Uh, continuation by the Planning Commission on March fourth, after, um, uh, going through the presentation. Of, of the applicant staff consultants, et cetera, um, they have, um, voted five-one to recommend conditional approval of the special use. With, um, uh, revisions to the site plan, um, and that will also, um, be at the March twenty-fifth. And that's all I've got, Michelle, any other questions, buddy?
Any questions for Michelle? Thank you for the updates, appreciate it very much. Um, as we move down through the report section, does anybody have anything to add for any of the Board and Commission reports, nothing? All, but I always give a chance if I remember. Um, those subcommittee reports, or on to City Manager for.
Sure, I don't really have any verbal updates for you, but if you have any questions.
So now I'm in a game.
Sure. Um, actually, I have a comment, not necessarily a question, and this, just the conversation we had about the packet and, um, the, the issue that. The first thing in the packet is the date of the minutes, the previous minutes, um. Is there, is it possible to put a cover page in the packet, on the packet that says packet for council meeting of this date?
Yeah.
Just put the agenda on the front.
Well, it's two separate.
Yeah, if, if for some reason we need to have the agenda and the packet separate, I think it would be. Good potentially to have a cover page for the packet that says this packet belongs to this meeting base. Just nice suggestion.
Fair suggestion.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yeah, so I'm looking at it, just follow up on that, it looks like there is a header to the upper right, it's just small, so it could be adding a whole nother page, it could be just. Changing the formatting where you say Agenda three eleven twenty-four, I'm sure you'll figure it out. Uh, also sort of administrative, I appreciate the weekly email updates. That we get, I get them to my personal email also, and. It just occurred to me that it might be nice to also include the DDA, um, the link to their agendas in packet, so I think we reference City Council Planning Commission, ACH and Parks and Rec. But not DDA, so I don't know if there was a reason for that, but I think it would be good to also. Keep residents informed generally that there's, hey, there's this other group that also makes big decisions, um, that impact the city, and here's your information about them, um. I had a question on K three, which is, uh, on consent agenda, this is establishing the DDA Development Area Citizens Council. And appointing membership, and I know this came up in the past. I just want to make. Double. Triply sure here, so. We have. How, how many people is it, five, four?
Five, five people.
Five people? And. So it says, you know, in the legal language, shall consist of not less than nine members. And I know we talked about in the past that not establishing this doesn't prohibit you from moving forward with the development plan and the tax needs to admit financing plan. I guess my question now is. We have fewer than nine members, maybe this is a question from Michelle, we have fewer than nine members. Are we technically? Meeting the requirements for this, I mean, I'm fine creating some group, but does it technically meet the requirements for this development area council thing?
We have to do in spring that, um, we're meeting a rest of, of the act. And it's, even though we can't, the council is able to get, I should say, nine members. By appointing a representative, yeah. It shows, it shows officially that we try instead of just providing a service to it. So if we, if. If we hold it nine, um, so we do for, um, we have a record that shows. We attempted to meet the requirements and the priorities.
Okay, so then are they legally the? Development Area Citizens Council? Okay.
So there's that, they would be.
So then are we establishing?
You are, you are attempting to establish a board, you're starting with the first five members.
Got it, so then.
If we find four more, we'll add to it.
Right, then will we, uh, because I think are there other things, like do the meetings have to be public, for example, or are there other requirements of the Development Area Citizens Council? That we would still be meeting even though we don't have the nine, like we're gonna treat these five as if they were the nine, and we're gonna do everything as if. They were the nine, or we're just, they're gonna be there and we're not doing anything with them?
Exactly, yes, because until you have all the members, you haven't established any kind of board. And since you have that. You can't establish a form without establishing all that members, so you're aiming to be working for establishing.
So then I.
Despite seeing awards, the city council and the village council, two thousand six, seven, eight, five, uh, minutes, um. The, the village council, it, in the game of the stats. Appointing. If that's only end up appointing over two or three new members, that's such, 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 successive. But they deal with only change. I don't think they did.
So then is there a plan that like this group is gonna meet informally, or? We're just, we'll just say, once we have nine, we'll get back.
That would be the thought.
Okay.
I think, Jamie, the idea would be that. You know, the, the goal is when. Some of the proposed projects and ideas are presented by our consultants. It's to make sure that people are looking at them, so I mean, uh. My plan is I'm gonna reach out to all five of these people, let them make sure that they're aware that those plans are out there, and if they have to come speak under. Non-arranged at the DDA meeting to provide their input, at least I'd like to make sure that they're looking at it since they volunteered to.
Right.
To be interested. Well, I could, I could add four more names. And we'd have nine, now whether they all show up at a meeting. You know, we, we've taken those that have volunteered. I could, for example, lean on Julie and say, Julie, would you want to be a sixth?
Right.
She lives in the DDA, okay? She may not, she, she may object, she may not, but, but I mean, we could, we could, we could physically put four names on there.
Got you.
And we could physically put four names on there.
Right.
We've known, we've always tried to do it with. People saying they want to be on there, right, that's been the first effort, is to get people who want to do it. So, but I mean, I, my, my intent as a serving on the DDA. As the liaison from this board. When we get to the point where they would be. Acting if they were a nine-member board, I'm gonna make sure all five of them know what it was, what it is that. We would have had them look at, if that makes any sense.
Right, right.
Because I think the public comment was what we want, that's what we're looking for.
Right.
We're looking for their gut, do they think we're headed in the right direction or not?
But it'll come kind of sort of.
Informal.
From them as individuals, but.
Yes.
Okay. I have another question, but if you have a follow-up on that.
It's not a question, it's a, just a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I. I agree this is important, and I have recommended a number of names. To our mayor to look into in the DDA to see if they would like to participate, and I will keep trying to do that because. Need that input.
I keep bouncing ideas off people.
Uh, then my other question was just, um. Seeing that, I guess there's continued work on the carnival, bicentennial carnival, the last time I was able to share a comment about it, I guess I got the sense that. Maybe we were not generally moving in that direction, but we are, and so I guess I just wanted to restate that I'm not generally in favor of that direction, but I look forward to. Seeing the full proposal, and I guess I can share more about it then. I liked the single Ferris wheel, I do.
Thank you.
So, so, so sorry, sorry to, to just follow up on that real quick, um, there. They've been very willing to compromise on different aspects, uh, to, to make it work, so, um, you know. The, the stumbling blocks that, that we've put in front of them. As, you know, th- these are issues that were raised at council, um, they've been, they've been able to find ways to accommodate, so, you know. Not being able to find a location for their staff, for example, you know, we, we had proposed an app site, council wasn't, wasn't keen on that. So they've offered to, to bust their employees. Um, you know, we, we talked about it, different. You know, the, 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 the closure area, they've been able to, to accommodate that. So. Um, Josh, Josh also did some research on. Individual Ferris wheels and, uh. Very expensive.
Zach, a question about the congressionally directed spending. My recollection is the deadline to request that was originally tomorrow, but that it has been extended to next Tuesday.
That's correct.
My recollection also goes that there needs to be some action of this body to, to get that receipt. Is that your recollection as well?
I, I, I haven't had a chance to, to really dive into the, into the, the package.
Okay.
Um, I, I had originally set, set a meeting with, um, representative from Senator Peters' office. Early last week, and then he, uh, canceled and, and wanted to reschedule for, uh, later this week. Some of those were, were gonna be questions that, that I had for him.
Okay, well, since. Next Tuesday is before next meeting, I would offer a motion that. Directs the City Manager to contact. Representative Dingle, Senator Peters, and Senator Stabenow. And request up to six million dollars of community, of congressional directed spending for construction of public safety and outfitting.
I'll second.
Can you repeat that for us, please?
Yep, uh, directing. City Manager to contact Representative Dingle. Senator Peters, Senator Stabenow. To request. Up to six million dollars. Of congressional directed spending. To go towards public safety, construction, and outfitting.
Okay. A motion by Michelle, second by Griffin, was it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, council's question, what?
On the surface, I think this is. A great idea, and I hope that it. Under the surfaces too, I mean, we are exploring all options right now. We talked about it in our work session on Saturday. For funding, I mean. Well, obviously, that's not something we can. Bank on happening, but I'm all for asking about it. As we creatively try to figure out how to make this budget work.
Yeah, I want to, um, say my support as well, that when we, um, were at a meeting here for, um, setting the amount for the. Village request from our residents, um, we talked about all, looking at all possible, um, venues for, um. Additional funding, whether it's grants or, um, and any. Um, venues for, um, additional funding, whether it's grants or, um, and any possibility. So, um. I, I think that this is one of the possibilities, and I appreciate you bringing it to the table.
What? Yeah, just one quick follow up to that. Um, and I think I made this clear on Saturday. It's like, anything we can do to. Make this budget work and not put it on our taxpayers is the way that I want to go. Um, I think I've been very clear about that. Um, you know, I, I'm a single income person and. I don't want the additional tax for myself personally, but if that's the way we have to go, I mean, that's the way we have to go. But I do think it's good to look. All around so that we can figure out what makes the most sense.
Good comments? Okay, Georgia, please call the vote on the vote motion.
Sammy Pharaoh?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Justin, still with your report?
Only first questions.
All set, okay. Um, I had a, had a small report in the packet. I was out of town for part of it, so not very much activity, but one important thing to note, um. The tentative agreement that we thought we had with the, uh, local forty ninety firefighter group. Um, fell apart when they went to their meeting. Um, apparently they had, uh. Only ten out of the fifteen firefighters there, and six of them voted against it, so it did not pass. I was hoping that they would schedule a meeting again to try and get the full body there. Seems silly that only forty percent actually voted against it. Of the total, but, uh, we do have a meeting on Thursday to, um. Continue discussions, uh, which is the only next logical step. So I didn't have that on my calendar until. Uh, till now, but I want to make you aware that I do have a negotiation meeting on fourteen. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, we are down to consent agenda. I'm sorry, are there any council member reports? There weren't any in the packet. Okay, we're down to consent agenda with three items on the consent agenda, K one, K three, K four. Someone to make a motion, please.
I move we approve those three items on the consent agenda. Number one, bills and payroll in the amount of hundred seventy seven thousand. And thirty six dollars and forty eight cents. Number two, establishing DDA Development Area Citizens Council and appointing membership. And three, proposal from Carlisle Wardman and Associates for an amendment to the city's massive plan for amount not to exceed forty five thousand.
Is there a second? A second. Thank you, Dan. Second by Schlaf. Georgia, please call the vote when you're ready.
Aldag?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yeah.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes, approved. Um, consent agenda has been approved. We have no unfinished business. So we're down to the first of six new business items. Uh, M one is. Consideration of public safety's facilities direction. I know the, uh. So the committee met. Actually, last Wednesday, I guess it was. You have a bunch of information in the packet. There's quite a bit, almost ninety pages of, ninety pages of information, including stuff from the prior. Meeting back in, uh, February twelfth, I think it was. When we last gave direction to our construction management team to take a look at this, basically, it's nearly. Build or get for nine point seven million, I think was the basic vote and. Um, I don't know if there's someone that wants to make the motion to start, so now.
Can you do that? Um, I move that we, the city council direct, uh, partners in architecture and. To, um, move forward with, uh, option number four, um. Let me see what page in the. On page one fifteen.
Yeah.
Of our package.
Okay, so motion by Aldag, second by Summer Pharaoh. Or option number four, which is on page one fifty in the packet. That's actually four, and it's one fifteen to one sixteen, right? They go together? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you for putting something out there for discussion. I will took Justin, I will turn it over to you, who I know we have Phil David and.
And Sam.
Samuel on, online. Gentlemen, thank you for joining us tonight. We're waiting for the item.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, the facilities committee, uh, did meet last week, um, to review, uh, updated concepts. Put together by Partners in Architecture and Cunningham Lim. Um, there, there were updated costs provided, um, and there's a even more recent, um. Uh, version of the presentation, um, that was included in the supplement. Um, but I would hand it over to, uh, David and Sam to kind of talk through the presentation and. Um, kind of how, how we got to, uh, the four new options and where we're at today.
Okay, David Gasson here. Uh, great to be with you, uh, virtually. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person. Um, I mean, as both, uh, the mayor and Justin kind of said. Uh, regarding what we were tasked with doing in our meeting from, I think, February twelfth. Was to group together with Cunningham Limp and the user group and the committee. To bring back a solution that met the nine point seven, uh, million dollar budget. And we started down that path and, um, uh, building consideration number one is, is that version. Um, it, it does have many compromises and they're listed on the sheet. Um, namely, it really eliminates, um. Or reduces the possibility of a ladder aerial truck in the future based on the bay depth. Because of the square footage we need to hold to get to that nine point seven. There are many others as well, but that was the, the biggest. Um, I'll say compromise and, and maybe the chief could add on to it, but just to name a few others. We had to reduce dorms and offices, um, to also bring down the, uh, square footage. Uh, not to lose sight of the kind of ongoing conversation or discussion about. Um, capturing use of the park for flexibility and expansion in the future. We, um, we also looked at a couple of versions of that, thinking. That if we were to save the superstructure, mostly the perimeter walls of the basement. We could build on top of that, saving, um, in many areas of the construction budget. Um, but, uh, like it has in the past, every version of something in the park. Um, exceeded the cost of a comparable capacity if it's only on Main Street with that, uh, earth embankment. Uh, but we did two of each, and, uh, the two, uh, with the, um, lower level being utilized. Was three above over the superstructure that's there, plus the two bays below. And we would extend the depth of that, giving more flexibility and usability, uh, right away. Uh, the other option to that, and that was partially covering the park level superstructure. The other approach, uh, building consideration number three, was to utilize the full superstructure below. And up above, create four bays, which would encapsulate the limit of where the sheriff is currently. And coincidentally, or luckily, however you want to look at it, the current width east to west of the building. Uh, does accommodate four full, uh, with, uh, bays based on IFC. So that was a plus too, but it does ratchet up the cost as compared to our first view of saving the area at the park of three bays up and two bays down. Uh, but we went through the exercise of showing the benefits of, uh, doing that. And looking at those with the user group, most particularly, we, um. Looked at why it really didn't suit the future, well past either three or five years. Um, to look at version number one, which was the shallower ba- the depth of bays. But budget wise, it was working towards the objective. Uh, so version four was to say, okay, we looked at these three others. What can we really do, keeping in mind all the time that budget is the, is very important. But more important is the functionality of the fire station. So we increased the depth of the five bay version. On Main Street for building consideration number four. Um, the new package that you got, uh, as a supplement, showed a couple of things on the plan. Uh, location of, or at least number of apparatus. And seven was what would fit, uh, correctly based on, uh, requirements. And, um, the, the number of ways you could lay it out, uh, and if between the different versions of five bays on Main Street. Building consideration one and four, you can see that we kind of shuffled them around. That would be up to the department to kind of figure out what's the best place for which. Uh, but it does show that we get those seven, and in version four, um, with the added depth of the bay. We can get a future aerial, uh, when the department acquires one. Um, all of them compromised a number of offices, a number of dorms, but number four, building consideration number four. Increased the dorms to five, which, uh, we, um, see as the immediate need. Not maybe day one, but within three years, five years at most, you're going to need the added dorm for services of the apparatus that's there. Uh, likewise, um, it increased the office, uh, count as well. So based on the, as the motion was put, we all felt as a committee that this was the most reasonable. Uh, and accommodating, uh, version, even though it had compromises, it, um, would function into the near future. It also incorporated like we have in almost every version of design so far. The future flexibility of expansion. So the shortcomings on dorms and offices could be added. As well as the vertical circulation, uh, from Alpine down to the park and. Um, you can see that as you're looking at them, and I'm going to skip ahead to number four, since that's really what we're talking about. Um, may, maybe better illustrated on option number one, you can see the two dash boxes off to the right. On the Main Street floor plan. Not exactly sure why it isn't on version four, but same concept there. Um. Um, the other couple of things I'll point out here, um, when we looked at building consideration number one. It wasn't our very first attempt at reaching something that would be port, towards nine point seven. Uh, we had, uh, as we previously did, the hose tower off to the west in between the building and the creek. Uh, for the purpose of draping the hose twenty five feet and, and, and also contributing to some training scenario opportunities. Uh, but we found a better way, we think, uh, to incorporate the need for the hose tower. Within the central stair that was alwa- always there. And then eliminate that added square footage off to the west, and also the support space that was off to the west. So we incorporated that at more centralized. It's easier to get to and from, from the core space for cruise areas and operation areas. It eliminated the stair, which was, you know, eliminating some costly dollars. And it also consolidated, uh, the use of the mezzanine to that one stairs. So we didn't need another stair from the mezzanine that touched down on the apparatus bay floor. So overall, that was a real win in terms of layout. If I'm remembering right, we saved six hundred square feet. From the previous design solutions, which for version four, contributed to the ability for us to go deeper on bays. Um, even though the square footage totally went up, we got a little bit something else, say, extra. Um, by reconfiguring the mezzanine and eliminating that one stair. Um, the other thing that we did in terms of, uh, study here was, um. To meet, to meet budget, we kind of pulled back on some of the exterior enhancements, and you could see that. In, in both packages, but on the recent package is supplemental. Uh, we added in some arch, um, elements along Main Street. So if you're kind of now focused on the imaging. Uh, the first image that you see is the exterior imaging, it's titled, that's the overall kind of bird's eye view from Alpine Street. Couple of things you'll notice there, the building feels shorter from north to south because it is. Um, the green roof is now a white roof, which means we've eliminated, uh, that feature, uh, from a cost standpoint. You can still always add that in, but I would just want to underline this one thing is that we were always structuring that roof for future build out. Um, and reaching up the structure, et cetera. So we've pulled back on that to reduce budget also. Um, that's why it's now showing, oh, is a white roof. Uh, many other aspects of, obviously, the things we've been talking about in iter- many iterations are, are there. Um, if things got smaller, if things got less detailed on the exterior imaging, kind of going to the second image. Um, it's more of a ground level view from Alpine Street. You can see some of the, the elements are there visually, but material choices are different. Um, instead of cast stone headers, we're using soldier course, different color bricks. Uh, clay bricks and, um, kind of creating the, the view of a header, um, not, it is a header, but it's not cast stone. And just working our way around the building, trying to, um, maintain a character. Uh, and, and a level of detail, but maybe by doing it with different materials is what we've really attempted to do here. We also shifted the entry point, as you could see in that image, instead of farthest to the north, more towards the south. To incorporate the mechanical room, which is on Main Street, just to the left of where that officer at the entry porch is standing. Um, that would be a bump up from the mechanical room, and we wanted to disguise that. Um, bridging in between the trellis work of the firefighter's courtyard below. And the entry into the building, so it kind of feels flat across there. That would be earth over the roof or. Um, an element that gets, uh, the earth up on top of it, but it's really building below. It's the mechanical room space. Um, to go into the next image, kind of working our way around, um, this is now the front on Main Street, kind of on the walkway. Uh, you can see some of the elements there have been changed in terms of material type, but visually it kind of still appears as a. Stone or a different material as a header. Um, the, uh, brick across the apparatus bay, not the kind of decon in the office, which is the right components, the left components, the apparatus base. Um, look like, um, standard brick, but it's a, it's a C brick. Which is a, a concrete composition that's full depth, so it's not a cavity wall. It's more economical. It meets the energy code. Structurally, it's the quality and the thing we want to do to hold up the roof. Um, as a bearing wall, but it's less costly. Um, still some material color changes there. Um, and then the next view should be how we would treat that with arches. Um, and that would be an application on top of that C brick. Uh, we're just trying to show that there's possibility for us to kind of. Um, enhance it in some ways. So we didn't want to lose totally sight of. Um, the work we'd made, uh, through the, the planning commission comments and the parks commission, as well as. Through the committee and council, uh, we've all had these kind of discussions about it's important for this building to. Fit in downtown as best we can and, and, and not, um, be a lesser building in terms of its image or materials. Um, yeah, there's still more work to do, but here's, here's kind of where we are trying to, again, keep in mind, uh, being as frugal as possible. Uh, the next image is more of a straight on entry into, uh, fire services off of Alpine Street. Next image is, uh, from the park, uh, again, the earth embankment, some landscaping that's more symbolic than anything planned at this point. But there would be something, how to break up that wall with some, some horizontal elements. So we have the water table at the bottom with. Simulated, uh, stone cap to it, and then, you know, some breaking up that vertical wall with brick banding and windows. Um, that's just how we have windows now. We could probably add the third or the fourth and the fifth bay window. Into the mezzanine once that planning up there gets worked out. So it, again, it kind of breaks up the. What feels pretty massive, and and this might be a little bit out of scale because it's only about the building right here. Um, but it is eighteen feet plus up above the parking level. Um. We didn't include a site plan here, but uh as we talked about last time, we were looking at this earth embankment concept with nothing at the park level. Uh, we had previously been showing from the earth embankment bottom. To the parking space was a forty-foot circulation aisle. And we don't need that much, we could pull it back to twenty-six feet. And the encroachment on the park, and that's one of your earlier topics about your park improvements. Uh, the encroachment would not be the eighteen feet that we previously talked about, it'd be more like uh six or five or four. Maybe even none, depending on how the earth embankment gets engineered, you may be able to keep the park edge just like it is. Um, and then the final view is more or less, again, a narrow view from more frontal versus what we saw earlier. So we're, 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 we feel like progress has been made, not losing sight of the target of a nine point seven version, we. We we had, we had that obviously, because it was consideration number one. We previously had a five bay on Main Street, which was. Uh, more than the current building consideration number four. But I think we ended up as a group uh feeling that. Uh, this is a a a a version of a fire station that's all new, five bays on Main Street. With some future expansion capabilities that meets your needs for the immediate term. So this is what we're, as a committee, we're. Pleased to be able to put this forward for your consideration. Uh, to go through the budgeting, I I guess. Um, you have that information uh in your packet. It talks about how the these four considerations break down as a. Construction cost, and I want to underline its construction cost. It also indicates a a couple of things um that have not been included. That had been previously talked about. One thing I'll uh highlight here is the storm shelter. It's a cost. Uh, but not including it, um, has some rationale to it, but also. If we do it in a timely manner, um, the requirement won't be imposed on the building project. We have been recently talking about it, anticipating it passing before we were done. Uh, and that still may be the case, but. Um, the, you know. You know, based on the chief's conversation, or he and I. We felt like um the cost of doing it versus the benefit of having it. And the benefit being where the firefighters would go in case of a storm. As compared to they'd be out in the storm helping people, didn't seem to. Add up to spending the money to do it. Uh, because it's not a piece of the building that's open to the community, it's just for the firefighter occupants of the building. Um. So you can see a couple of other things, uh, one compromises on each plan sheet. Um, and then the footnotes in each of those uh descriptions in terms of building consideration. The other thing I want to point out, I think you you all know, or at least the committee knows, is that. The building cost for Main Street. Five bay building isn't the total project cost, that's just the fire station, there's still. Uh, the rest of the project, which is what we need to do a thirty-five fifteen Broad Street. Which is still the temporary accommodation in some form. And um some part of that would be usable for. Um, it would be planned that it would be usable for the future, you know, sheriff's build out as well, in terms of entering and exiting primarily. Um, and then also the sheriff's build out. And I think we've reached the point of, you know, as we've been working back and forth with the. Uh, sheriff's department, you know, a a solution that's gonna be uh satisfactory to them. Fit within the spaces there and and kind of maintains the budget that we've been talking about. The other thing is Alpine Street. Uh, the work within the right away. Um, is another component of the project, but it's not included in what we looked at for the. Budgets for the five bay. Um, building consideration number four, that would be separate, the way we've indicated it here. And then we also kept the options, as we've been talking about from almost the beginning. Vertical circulation core. Uh, the future add of the cab, if you don't do it initially. And then the park level uh restrooms. Um. Uh, each of those get more complicated. Um, and and costly without having something at the park level. Uh, but certainly as the the design advances, if this were the choice to move forward. Uh, we work out the details of how to make that as easy as as a add-on in the future as possible, without having something. Initially at the park level. So that kind of summarizes the documents that we. Um, put before you, and then uh the the final one was prepared. As a um. In a e- extrapolated view of, and I'll let Sam kind of take over from there, in in terms of what these. Uh, schemes were in more of a detailed fashion from a cost and construction sequencing standpoint.
Sure. Thank you, David. Um, again, really what we ended up doing, and I'll just keep it brief here. Um, you know, we looked at primarily, you know, consideration number one from a construction cost standpoint, so we did go back through. Like as we were last in front of uh, in front of city council, we. Chose to take a fresh look at it, that's what we did. Um, and then off of that, you know, baseline pricing made the modification to, you know, consideration number two. From a detailed estimating standpoint. And then really option three and option four are really extrapolations or additions to uh option one and option two. So it's ultimately what we got to, I think as David uh mentioned from a construction standpoint. You know, we've continued to update the pricing as it relates to some of the other project related items, be it costs. Uh, or options. And again, as these buildings, footprints, changes, modify, you know, not all of these numbers are constants. Uh, because as as scope of work changes, as the building moves. Um, you know, there are other accommodations that need to be considered from a budgeting standpoint.
Okay, questions from council? Thank you both for the uh. The work over the last month and the explanations. Do does council members have questions on anything? They went through a lot there.
Jamie, go ahead. Yeah, I guess maybe a question for chief or I guess somebody else who's familiar with the building. I'm curious what the firefighters currently use as a storm shelter. Or a place to go during severe weather.
Chief, did you hear the question? Are you, are you with us? Oh, gosh, it's on.
I I did, sorry, I was unmuting. Um, we. We don't really, in any of our stations, have a. Designated storm shelter area, we sort of. Consider the building uh a storm shelter, or as as David alluded to. Typically, when the weather gets really bad, we're. We're responding to it and out, out. Uh, in it. As opposed to sort of battening down uh inside the building and waiting for it to pass.
You follow?
Um, okay, yeah, I mean, I guess I would, not knowing. How you operate, I appreciate that input. I mean, I'm just looking at the FEMA guidance and they're considering. First responders to be vulnerable populations, so people who are. Not able to evacuate, and so I guess I'm imagining a situation where in the direct line of a tornado. And I appreciate that you want to be out helping people, but. We also want to make sure you're like alive and able to help the people, and so if you're, you know, if you have to like hunker down before you go out and do the search and rescue kind of a thing. Anyways, I would feel like the storm shelter is more of a priority. That's just my sense.
Okay. Any other questions? Zach?
Yeah, so I wasn't here because I had the influenza B, but my my recollection is this body said, come back with something that's gonna be nine point seven million all in. And it looks to me that option four excluding a lot of things is still six hundred and twenty thousand dollars above that. And there are a lot of expensive things not included, like the temporary facility. The work on Alpine. Um, vertical circulation to the park for the public, public restroom. Um. I guess that's all.
Okay. Go on. Yeah. Questions for Sarah? Wow.
I just want to say this is another thing that we had a really good discussion about on Saturday at our bull setting session, which. Is on YouTube already, so if anybody has. The desire to look deeper into the conversations that we've had. Um, I think. That is, it's a really good example of us working together. And. All expressing our opinions and trying to figure out the best way forward when. The budget limitations that we have, which we would have regardless of the site and. Just the creativity of thought. Um. As far as this storm shelter goes, I mean, I think. It's telling that the chief said that none of the stations have that, and a big part of our discussion on Saturday was. How to be equitable within the interlocal agreement. With. Who's paying for what? And in terms of. Population. We are the lowest population. Of anybody in the DAFD. And, you know, and I'm not saying the townships owe us money, but I think it's something that we need to consider as we. Look at the cost to our residents. Um, in light of the fact that that agreement was made in what, nineteen eighty-five-ish? Where things were very, very, very different. In terms of the look between here and the townships. Um. And I don't know, maybe I'm rambling, but. I just want to state that and let it be known.
Well, I think, I think one uh. One important thing to. To note here, and this came out in our discussion on Saturday, um. A little bit, but you know, two years ago. In twenty twenty-two, when we were putting together the budgets. For either a. New build. Or. A potential renovation, depending on which site we were. Gonna go to. There wasn't, um, there wasn't as much focus on. The possibility of this ambulance. Rescue service being. Uh, something that we had to account for. Um, one of the five bays. That's planned here shows a future ambulance. And. DAFD has. Been planning to get one for about a year now. But that wasn't. Part of the formula when we set out as a body. In twenty twenty-two to to arrive at the eight point four million. Um. I think everybody on on at council understands that the current interlocal. Recognizes that the city is gonna have the main station, and for that we. We tend to uh maybe bear the burden of having. Maybe bigger facilities. Uh, but we also get the benefit of having that facility here in Dexter. And and those resources here in Dexter, whether it's people or equipment. So I I. I see that as a positive, uh, while it it may add cost to the the overall program. Um. Justin, I, so what yours, I just want to make sure I'm clearly understanding here. We have around three hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of. Improvements that are shown on the concepts that would be within the Alpine Street right away, so that would be street funds that we would. Potentially be able to use if we wanted to, if 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 there wasn't bond money to cover that.
For, I mean, that's, that would be the.
And and that would be what's anticipated now, right? Okay, and we haven't asked the DDA yet to contribute. To. So so where I was going with that is that. As we're refining whatever scenario, if we if we do pick one tonight. I would like to make sure that at the DDA meeting in March, that we get the scenario and the pictures and the explanation in there, so they can. Better understand how we're spreading the cost out and what's covered and what's not covered. Um. If I'm looking at this, I see. A total. Cost that would affect the general fund or the bond money. Of ten million, nine hundred thousand, of which. Nine hundred thousand is is contingency. Is am I understanding that right?
Yeah, so for.
Between owner contingency and or construction contingency and and.
Yeah, for fraction four.
Proportion four, the one we're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, so you so you have uh four hundred thousand in owner contingency, about four hundred thousand for CN contingency. Um, five five hundred thousand in FFNE, which that still has to be refined and and determined.
Okay, so so. Outside of the con- contingency, we're we're looking at. Um. Ten million, essentially two hundred thousand. Versus the nine seven. Was that? A fair in the general fund? We're not not including street improvements and. Sidewalk and. Those things that would. Contribute to the street view of this facility, right? Okay. Okay. So that's gonna leave a future consideration then, if we if if we ended up using both contingencies. To the fullest extent, that's gonna leave us needing to come up with a determination of how to pay for. The additional one point two million. Um. My recollection is we have about two and a half million in reserves. Thereabouts two point four million in reserves at the last count.
Uh, I think once you, once you back out, the the million was already been.
One, yeah, once that's backed out, right, right. Okay. So we we could either do that, or we could, or we could um. Issue another bond for that amount. For sure, the one, and you're something. Okay. Okay, this is good. We're getting closer. So now you had your hand up, and then I'll go back to Zach.
Yeah, um, thank you for bringing that up, because that was one of the main things that we had a conversation in um in the committee. Of course, option number one is the closest to our budget in um in amount wise. I think we all in that conversation agreed that having the five bays from the beginning is beneficial, and of course, having one is. Um, used by the ambulance, but just having that will take us into the future, so that really put us to option one and option four. And option one, being closer, does not provide the dorm space and some of the square footage needed for. Um, really the support of the ambulance service, um, the operations of it, so. For us was that, okay, we go with option four, and that's, as you mentioned, is something that is. Newer in terms of the service that we want to provide and operate it solely out of this station. Um, there are. You know, one of the things that we was brought up was about the uh bathrooms or the walkway down or the elevator down. Um, those were things that we were considering as a nice to have as part of this project, but they were. In my opinion, were not to begin with as a requirement of having. Um, this project there, and um. Nothing says that in we are not able if. We have additional sources of funding and something comes up, um. If, you know, the uh. The suggestion that Mr. Michelle brought up, if we. Have another six million dollars out of, um. Additional coming um to us potentially, then we can always think of what else can be added as as part of this. But the requirement is the first and foremost is the functionality. Um, and of the. Operations of the fire station, in my opinion, and um. With that, that was really for us to go back and forth and having that conversation with chief's input, um, and. Option four, yes, it is more, um, and we we look at, um, what are the possible ways of funding it. Um. But it gets us with the the functionality of an ambulance service fully out of the main station.
Zach, you had your hand up?
Yep, I I have a question on page one thirty-four, it's the. The turning movements for the temporary facility, which which I know we're talking about the permanent, but that decision brings us up. I was just out there today, and between the parking. That's showing as a fire lane, there's only twelve feet distance. My recollection is fire lanes are sixteen to eighteen feet. Um, so whoever drafted this plan, make sure to double check it, I don't think this is up to. Um, so whoever drafted this plan, make sure to double check it. I don't think this is up to international fire group as it shown.
Okay, fair comment, we definitely need to make sure we're giving them rules. Uh, sorry, did you?
So, yeah, the on the February twelfth meeting, we had the motion by. Council member Griffin supported by Councilman Rowby to work toward the nine point seven million dollar budget, so. That frankly was. I thought that was. That was really kind of instrumental in getting us to the point that we're at. That was great discussion that we had and. Kind of got things rolling, um. It kind of shifted the baseline and. What it did was to allow us to look at that and look at it with some revised um. Requirements or objectives that we've that we have. And whether or not that would meet what it is that we needed. And the feedback that we got uh, in the meeting with the committee meeting was that it didn't and. The reason I say that was a good thing was because instead of trying to start out at some design. And whittle our way down and say, what can we take out? We got to a baseline that was lower and we added in what it was that we needed to get. So I think it was a terrific uh, process and um. The other part is the things that Mister Gassen mentioned, the efficiencies that were uh. That as we went through these designs, the things that um, came along as we had those discussions. Um, up to and including things like moving the the host tower to the center of the building closer to the upstairs. Things like that that just were. Efficiencies that were found and built in as the design was evolving, going through. Even when we went through with the share station, if you look at that picture of what the building looks like now versus what it looked like originally. The the footprint, the size, everything that went with it. You know, the sheriff saying they're gonna be happier located here, sorry, and. That building is gonna be optimized for for the firefighters uh, on Main Street, um. Basically, when we went through, we looked at, we said the nine point seven million dollar design didn't get to where we need to get to. So that's why. Want to say recommendation, that was basically the consensus of the meeting that we had. That option four was the option that we should uh, move forward with as a recommendation counsel, so um. I don't know if there's too much else, um, I it does have the added benefit, I think, of not impacting the park nearly as much. In fact, it may actually increase the amount of parking that we have down in the in the uh, park. Um, there was a very strong desire from the committee to keep the downstairs base or the downstairs uh, options. But every single time that we added that into the equation, it was just, it was a it was a budget breaker. It was like. Fifteen, twenty percent of the budget all by itself to try and get that worked in there and. We have talked about the stairs, we have talked about access to the to the park, those things, but. Those things are not public safety items, those are park items, those are things that we wanna do, hundred percent we should do, but um. I don't think we can look at the fire station and say, we have to make a compromise on what we're providing to the firefighters. Versus uh, something that's part of the parks, and we can do something for parks, if that's what we decided to do.
Well, and that that um, eliminating the fire vehicle traffic down there certainly makes it safer for people. If there's a if there's a rescue, you're not running. We have vehicles out of there or up the hill.
That was a voice concern. I I I don't know if I hundred percent agree with that, um, I mean, we have some of that now where. Some of the equipment is coming out of the downstairs or.
Yep.
Um, so I I I understand the concern and I guess it would eliminate that, so.
I would have preferred the space if we could afford it also, but it it doesn't, it does reduce it for sure. The other thing that it gives us the opportunity to look at potentially is with the added um. Grass area back there, there might be an opportunity to uh. Have some kind of long ramp. Along the slopes.
Um, I have no idea.
Yeah, I haven't done that exercise, but. Something could be like that too. Okay, seeing no further hands, we have a motion by Aldag and a second by Semifaro. To approve the concept on page one fifteen and sixteen. Please call the vote.
Hubbard, yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Michelle's?
No.
Aldag?
Yes.
Semifaro?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, um, we're down to the business side of M two. Consideration of uh, text amendment to the zoning ordinance section three oh nine fences in the I want an R G zoning difference. Joe?
Um, I'll move approve the amendment that is presented. Uh, suggested motion. I believe it's A for approval.
Okay, we are on. It's on page one ninety six, right? Suggested motion A on page one ninety six, right? Okay, is there a second?
I'll sign it.
So, right, Dan, thank you. Questions? Zach?
Just wanna clarify, as I read it here. This would still prohibit fences on vacant properties without buildings.
Right, this does not change.
I would offer the amendment that section one on page one ninety seven. Instead, read the city of Dexter twenty twenty three zoning ordinance is amended by revisions to article three, general provisions. Section three point oh six G to read as follows. I know it's a very kind of nerdy thing, but if you read it broadly, it implies that section three point oh six.
Oh nine?
Only gonna read that.
Three oh, three oh nine, three oh nine, sorry, actually, yes.
Yes, my apologies, I I was looking at the wrong spot that to correct that, so I'd offer that amendment.
Is that acceptable, Joe?
Sounds good.
Dan, okay? Did you get that, okay? Okay, we call the vote?
Uh, I have one other comment, I might not have time to pull it up, um. I'm pretty sure our charter says that the enacting language is hereby or things.
What?
And what? So in our in our charter on page twenty five, under ordinance form and procedure. Does no ordinance shall contain more than one subject, which shall be clearly expressed in its title. The enacting clause shall be the city of Dexter hereby ordains.
Uh, we need to add a word?
Yeah.
Okay.
Minor, but.
So, you go? That's good, Dan, okay. Okay, please call the vote to approve the uh, text amendment to section three oh nine fences as follows.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semifaro?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yeah.
Griffin?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, on M two, we are down at page of M three, which is consideration of text amendments to the voting ordinance article twelve. Development options in article fourteen P U D planning and development regulations for planning and development districts. I see no one wants to make a motion, we'll move on to M four.
If there is a reason you don't want to make a motion on this, I appreciate to know, because this affects other things that you've got. Um, in your heart, but.
Can you just generalize, i- is M three strictly? Administrative approval of the. Yeah.
That's what's in for article twelve, that's what the planning commission asked and recommended to have council, um, because they felt that. It's over burdensome as a as going through. Planning commission and then council, um, they have to follow a state law for condominium documents. And uh, by doing it administratively, what the what staff and city attorney can do is make sure that they're not. Putting something in the master deed bylaws that is that compromises or is against the zoning. Um, and for ensuring that the condominium subdivision plan is um, consistent with the site plan. They felt that it didn't need to go through planning commission and council to do that.
So does it go to planning commission?
The condominium document?
Yeah.
No, your your final site plan, you know, the regular preliminary final, that still goes planning commission and city council.
Well.
What is the concern?
Well, I don't, I wonder, I mean, I had a couple of questions, but I don't know if we should. Have a motion to discuss it or.
We can make a motion and always postpone the direction.
Someone wanna make a motion to put it on the table so we can.
I'll make a motion for uh. Approval of M three, the text amendment to the zoning.
Motion myself, Joe. Well, there, thank you. Okay, questions?
The uh. So. So the kind of the bylaws, I I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I I'm trying to give you some context about where it is, um. How how I feel about this, um, the the bylaws and the the items that go into the documents that go into a condominium. Economy documents, um. I understand in large part that a lot of the state law. We go through and we approve it um, as the city and it could be a planning or. Um, I guess one question is, could it come to council and not come to, could it bypass planning, just come to council for approval as well?
If you want to, yes, it could do that.
Um. I'd actually like to see it go the opposite direction of less oversight. I think that the bylaws and the information in the condo docs should have. We not only should be looking at it from the council perspective, we should have an additional step to make sure that those bylaws are. Followed in the developments, because.
We don't have the authority to do that.
Well, we gotta figure out some way to do it, because otherwise, all we're doing is we're approving paperwork and then the developer is doing what they wanna do.
So.
And that, let me finish something, because literally, that is what has happened. I I I talked to a resident on Saturday morning, and they said they talked to Mister Heisler one year, they were building their house in Westridge. And they said, we don't want this, Mister Heisler said, I'm the association, I can do whatever I want to do. And he did, and he went and did things, the fences, he built houses that were less than the sizes specified. And there was no teeth to it, it's like, we go through all the effort of doing these bylaws and getting them approved and then. There's no enforcement, because the only option that you have is to tell a bunch of homeowners, go get a lawyer and sue them, that's the only option they have.
If the changes that the homeowners association makes, whether it's the developer or once it gets turned over the H O A. If they are in line with zoning. There's there's nothing that we can do on that.
In the bylaws, it says after X number of years, regardless of how many houses were leased in Westridge, it said within X number of years, and I think it was five. It gets turned over to the homeowner.
Uh, um, it's it's usually not based on years, it's based on percent of sale.
There was also something that went on, because as this was, these were people that were building a house in two thousand eleven to twelve time frame. Okay, which was almost fifteen years after that condominium development start, there is. That one hundred percent could have been enforced, that the homeowners association could have sued Heisler and said, we're the association, not you. You can't do these things, and the fact of the matter is, that's what I'm saying, we're putting residents in a place where the only option they have. Is to go get a lawyer and lawyer up and go after the developer. And in the meantime, the developers doing what they wanna do, he's not following the bylaws to set up the association, he's not turning over. It's been he so.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just.
The developer is going through and it's just. We are going through and we're doing this process to get these things approved and to put them in place. And you know, at least in the past, there's been a lot of discussion about what goes into those and what kind of requirements there are and. What I thought, you know, twenty years ago, when I first saw some of these things, was that the developer was actually gonna go by what was in those documents. And then it turned out that wasn't the case. They just basically, in some cases, it just said, we're gonna do what we wanna do, so it's like. Our residents look to us and say, hey, you approve this, you guys are the government, why are you let? We so we have to, wait, wait, we have, my next door neighbor had to come to the city. To get a deck built and had to send a letter to Mayor Kio, because it's in his backyard also, because it had to go to. We do all these things, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta get signed up, we say you have to get signed off from the association. Before you can do these things, before we grant those things. Why is it that a developer can go ahead and build a house without the city saying, we checked through and you made sure that you made?
So when what? So when a developer brings in their zoning compliance for that new house. It gets verified or uh, reviewed based on the approved. Final site plan. And a uh, P U D agreement if it was part of the P U D. It does not get reviewed against the master plan or the, I'm sorry, master deed and bylaws, because we don't have that authority. Those are a set of rules that property owners agree to over and above. What the law of the the land, so to speak, the zoning is. And so the the responsibility is on the homeowner. When it comes to those bylaws in those master deed rules. As part of the administrative function, um, and I've done this for twenty plus years. You make sure that whatever language is going into that master deed and bylaws, one is. At a minimum, consistent with your final site plan and P U D agreement, if it's a planned development. Anything over and above the developer decides to put in, make sure that that development is um. Attractive, as long as it does not go against zoning, um. We don't have control over them, um, so the fences, for example, um. And you'll have to forgive me, I can't remember if it's Dexter Crossing or Westridge. If the master D says no fences. The developer can put that in, unless a site plan that was approved. Showed that fences were gonna be allowed, but we propose that one, we take that out, because the final site plan already says it. If it doesn't address it on the final site plan, and the developer wants to put that in, they can do that. However, if a homeowner decides, okay, I'm gonna apply to the city. I have to approve it if it meets the zoning, because that's the law. That homeowner then, which is why we have a disclaimer on our zoning compliance one, has to go to the homeowners association. If they decide not to do it and they go and build that fence. It's it's on them, homeowners homeowners association to figure it out, it's not on cities, we don't have the authority. We don't have law behind it.
Zach? Let me, a quick way I like to describe my folks is, the master deed and bylaws is a private contract between the private property owners and the developer. The site plan is a contract between the city and the property owners. The site plan is a contract between the city and the property owners. And we can only enforce the contract that we're a party to, a lot of communities will put things that they want into the master deed and bylaws that can get tricky because. We're not a party to it, the way to close that loop is things that is important to us, things that are important to us. Document that in our approval, document in the site plan or incorporate that into a development agreement, which is. Our contracts with with the parties in addition to the site plan.
And you can do a development agreement whether it's a P U D or not, we have that ability in the ordinance. I I know you're frustrated.
Oh.
I I.
I can tell you.
Uh you you. Are you would have to get in a line and a very long line, um it it's it's the downside of. Of subdivisions.
I I don't from with respect to the proposal that we have. I until I feel like. I can tell a resident that the rules and the requirements that are in the bylaws are gonna be approved. And if it has to be that it's a P U D agreement, a development agreement, whatever it is, and then I think that that has to come here so that we can make sure to say. All the requirements of bylaw, we're gonna follow them, that's a development agreement or a P U D agreement or whatever it is, I. I I. I can't tell you how frustrating it is to have residents come to me and say, why can they do this, why is the city letting them do this? And to tell them. There's nothing that we can do about it, he's the developer, he can do whatever he wants to do, it it's it's so frustrating, it's unbelievable. And I just can't see going the other way off of. You know, I mean, God forbid, I'd say to somebody, oh, we don't even approve that. If you don't look at that, that's not even true, I mean, that's the last thing you want, it's the last thing I want to tell someone. So I apologize, I should have brought something up sooner, but I didn't.
If you, um, okay, if you would like to take that part out, but look at the P U D portion, um, could we do that?
Which you're talking about Article fourteen now, not anything to Article twelve.
Right.
And explain explaining why Article fourteen is better with these changes?
So with Article fourteen, the initial impetus for the amendment was. That in the um zoning enabling act under the section dealing with planned unit development. It says that the the um the body responsible for um approving a P U D must hold a public hearing. We, like every other community that I've been able to find an ordinance on, would sit with the planning commission. I can't tell you if that's a holdover from before the M Z E A was was adopted or not. Um but the way to fix this is to um um. To still continue, still have a public hearing by planning commission at preliminary. That gives the public an opportunity to provide their comments before any decisions have been made. And then to follow the M Z E A, you add at the final site plan. When the planning commission makes the recommendation to council, council schedules a public hearing and then holds that before making the decision.
And I I said Article fourteen, I meant Article nineteen, my my apologies, I meant the, I said the wrong thing.
Yeah, I just automatically knew it in that.
My wrong reading was not was not good, so I apologize.
And then there are just some cleanup items that we did along the way to um um. Uh to make sure that this section, this article was doing what we needed it to do. For the for the community.
Joe.
Um, I I was gonna ask Councilmember Michelle, because I remembered he brought it up before, I hope he was supposed to approve it, does. If this me, if this addresses the concern that.
Does he have?
That he had preached.
Yeah.
I'll.
Do you want to make a revised motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend to only approve Article nineteen and not approve Article twelve.
And you're going to need to have to make one other thing.
Sure.
Is that um um under Article K. Instead of it saying, which is on page two oh seven, instead of it saying administrative review and approval. Um the following information shall be provided. Colon or semicolon.
And remove.
And remove the rest of that.
Yeah.
So that. It will still come to um.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Makes sense, Joe?
Yes.
Makes sense, Sonamial, second still? The other questions on?
Zach? Yeah, of course, I'm gonna have some, you want you want the big picture stuff or the little detail stuff to start?
Big picture.
Everything, okay, um. Go ahead, I didn't label these very well, um I'm on page two oh three.
Two oh three.
At the bottom where it says the six months period.
Hold on just a second, please.
It seems kind of contradictory with it being valid for twelve months, is that meant to say? If you come in and we postpone it and you don't do anything, it's dead?
For six months, yes, this is this is prior to any action actually being taken.
That I think A probably ought to be revised to make that a bit more clear. Because they could get approval and then they don't have to bring any information in. And it's still valid for for twelve months with the approval, but this would be conflicting in saying, hey, we didn't get anything because they didn't need to bring anything.
Would you like to just take that A section out?
It's it's for the body. Um, yes.
That you bring up a good point.
And then probably also B and I would come out on the following page, since those are carry ons on that.
I'm sorry, see.
Yeah, that that whole section would come out, right? Yeah. Um, on page two oh two, what was the discussion of removing the the table of deviations at the preliminary meeting? I know it's not gonna be a completed table, but it's usually good to know what sort of things they're trying to wiggle around with.
So the ta- the table of deviations, they're not gonna have a full fleshed out plan at conceptual. And so what we did is I moved it over to preliminary where it should come where they'll have more information and we're able to more appropriately evaluate it.
Would there be value in a table of anticipated or known deviations?
We um. We could, but I think we could do that without necessarily that being specifically in there.
Okay, I raise it because a lot of times when you see folks come in, they have no idea, they're just throwing spaghetti on the wall. And they don't realize that there are a thousand deviations that they're asking for, which makes it really tough to sell unless there's fountains with dolphins bouncing around.
And part of what I found in the way we have been doing um uh pre-op meetings is. I give it nauseam, very clear directions on what needs to be provided. And I don't believe there has yet been a conceptual that's come in where somebody's identified their deviations. And um while we can see what they might be. Um what I what I'm afraid will happen if we keep it here is if they don't bring it in and um. It could keep creating the cycle where, okay, you have to come back for conceptual, or we're not ready to come back for conceptual. And that goes against the process that we kind of had in place, which is. Provide the right amount of information at the next stage of the deal.
All right, yeah, I'm not gonna die on the hill, but I've I like them having to realize and look at the.
Oh, I I I don't disagree with you on that.
And if if it's a bunch of deviations and we say at least something and they come in with nothing, at least you can say, you gotta tell us something before we go anyways.
Right, right.
Um, a structural thing, Mr. Grace, my seven.
I'm sorry?
Uh, on page two hundred. I know this isn't the final site plan, but is the reason why it's structured with five and A? Mrs. Grace, my seventh grade geography teacher said when you're outlining, if you have an A, you ought to have a B, and if you don't have a B, then A probably.
That's in section, that's in section twelve and we're not.
Yes, but I I I know, but structurally, if they're gonna have to redo it, I see.
Oh, for number five, A, yeah, I can just make it five without the A.
Um. Let's see, there are a couple spots, okay, on page two oh seven. Uh, under K, one B, the condominium documents. Um, is that intended to exclude Exhibit B?
No, the Exhibit B comes in um. Uh. Condom condominium subdivision plan is the next one.
Okay, so that's intended to be the Exhibit B?
Yes.
Um, I would throw out consideration of not requiring that as final P U D. My experience has been, so those not nerdy enough, Exhibit B of a condominium document for a site condominium is essentially a dumb version of the site plan. It shows where the units are and what the common elements are, that type of stuff. I have a lot of developers I've talked with who hate requiring Exhibit B at the time of final site plan because it's not unlikely that the planning commission or town or legislative body will change something. And now they have thousands of dollars to change not just the site plan, but the Exhibit B documents as well, um I don't know how to fix this.
I think it's easy to put a a um um. A little um number three, if you will, um that a applicant can request. Um to bring in the condominium document after site plan.
Now now I want to do some little kind of stuff.
Hang on a second.
I rather enjoy, I like seeing those, make sure they're consistent.
Right on, and then again, we're not doing twelve, but per revisions, this will be useful, so uh page one ninety nine two. I'm a big fan of Oxford commas or serious commas, so master deed, bylaws, comma, and condominium subdivision plan. Um, it seems silly, but you can lose millions of dollars if you don't have the commas in there, right? I'd also offer on page two hundred, under I development agreement, instead of A.
Hang on, which one did you say?
Uh I development agreement, the last sentence, instead of development agreements and record the same in the Office of Register of Deeds for Washtenaw County, just. And record in the Washtenaw County Register of Deeds. That's how we've used that term of art in other places in our ordinance, it's shorter and we ought to be consistent when we can.
Okay.
Uh, again, that's all Article twelve stuff.
Yes, yes, but if it's coming back, they might as well have it now, right? Um, to do on page two oh three. I would offer under two D, instead of a table which details, a table that details, and again, it feels like a persnickety thing, but which is a non-essential clause where that is an essential clause, so you can make the argument. Doesn't really apply. Um. We already did that one under page two oh five. You didn't know this? Well, no one's accepted them yet, I'm just throwing boogers on the wall here right now, um page two oh five, uh Roman numeral two. Just to cleaning up, instead of the developer demonstrates that he she is making substantial progress, just the developer demonstrates substantial progress towards application. And then the series underneath that, instead of ending A, B, C, D, E, F, G with periods and then semi colons, since it's. Falling down from the two with the colon and then F having the the semicolon and the or. Right on page two oh six. Under I two A.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, then the city council may postpone. We're not a township board and postpone is when it goes to the next meeting where's tables later in the meeting.
I'm sorry, which one was it?
Uh, two A.
Okay, so we're board of city council and table to postpone.
I'm sorry, you said two oh six, two A?
Yep.
However, city determines additional information is made?
Yep, on the second to last line of that.
Okay.
Then the city council may postpone.
Fine.
And then C, the last one, uh the city and applicant shall execute the P U D agreement and report it with. The Washtenaw County Register of Deeds. Again, cutting out an unnecessary clause to make an essential clause.
Yeah.
Uh, under C, Roman numeral I. The three, our convention in our ordinance has been to spell out the number and then put the Arabic numeral within parentheses, so I would make it consistent there. Do you? And that's all I have, that's all I would offer.
Okay, so a lot of those are grammatical or consistency in words. Um. As it relates to the ones in Article nineteen and the motion on the table, did you have any issues with those, Joe?
No.
No? Okay. The other questions on, so the motion is to approve the text amendments to the zoning ordinance. To Article nineteen, P U D planning and development regulations.
With the changes that with the changes.
Mentioned, yeah.
That with the change to K one, the reference in K one plus X.
I've got them all.
Okay.
Would you please call the vote?
Schlaf?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Motion carries new business side of M four, consideration of text amendments to the zoning ordinance, amendment procedure, section twenty three oh one. Article twenty three. On page two nineteen.
I moved to approve, sorry. Sorry.
No, go ahead, let's uh, but it's been.
Uh, I moved to approve the proposed um. Okay, just to the tax amendment to the zoning ordinance. I believe it's on page two twenty.
Yep, number two, there, and you're doing it.
Yeah, A approved.
Second, second by Sam, Phil. Any questions on the? Edition of zoning administrator, Zach?
Um, is electrical transformer a mechanical equipment? Brown line electrical transformer?
Where I'm for.
Oh, sorry, I jumped ahead too far.
It's okay.
Hold that one. Okay, seeing any other questions, let me rush. Um, yeah, with my, a bunch of questions on my three.
Yep. Um, I would offer two, instead of official zoning map or the provisions of this ordinance. The official zoning map or the text of this ordinance. Um, and that's it's the the highly highly technical thing is it's a zoning map amendment or a zoning text amendment, there's language in the zoning ordinance that's not necessarily provisions like definitions and those type of things, but we may amend those from time to time.
So change provisions to texts?
Yep.
Plural? Text?
Yep, okay, same.
Everybody understand the proposed change? Okay, please call the vote to approve.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yeah.
You?
Yes, motion carries new business side of M five is consideration of text amendment to the zoning ordinance, Article two definitions in an article. Now fourteen, specific use provisions. Number six, Zach's question on the piano. Zach, would you like to make a motion? No, I I'm okay, I'm I'm just making questions. All right, well, nobody makes a motion, we're gonna go right to M six.
I'll move that we approve the motion, uh, suggest motion A in the package on page two twenty five.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Hubbard, thank you. Okay, questions?
Zach, I'll let you go first, okay, um, so the question mechanic transformer or electrical transformer on the ground, is that mechanically equipped?
Yes.
Should that be added as a exemplar? As a exemplar to the definition from.
Um, in what way, I'm happy to do that, I'm.
Air handling units comma. Electrical transformers comma and stationary emergency and standby powered.
Okay.
Generators. Or perhaps even. Ground mounted. Electrical transformers, so we don't. Run a mess of D T with their stuff up on the pole. Um, I'm just gonna run through this top to bottom, so I don't have to bounce back and forth. I would suggest under B one. I'm on page two twenty six now, because I went to the black and white version here, um, I've entered. Um, my Oppenheimer phase, I guess, uh, one, ground mounted should be hyphenated. It's a compound adjective. Um, two setback, in this case, it's a verb, so it should be two words, set space back. I do have a question on two. Um, if someone's house. Is close to the property line, would this doesn't appear to also require? That it be setback from neighbors building. So if if someone has a house one foot from the property line.
Mm-hmm.
This says it needs to be three feet from the side lot line, but that means that. It would be four feet from neighboring house.
Mm-hmm.
So my question, would it be, would we better serve the public interest if generator shall be setback? A minimum of five feet from adjacent buildings, from all buildings.
Um, I think we run into some problems where you have only a five foot setback. And that how that? Unit then is right against the house and. They can't put them right against.
I I know I've worked in lakes areas and I frequently would have to ask people, where are you putting your HVAC, where are you putting your generator?
So. What this sets up is. The ground mounted. In the side yard is only a many. If it can't be located. In the rear yard. So, um. If the. The way I interpret this based on the intent of it. If somebody comes in. And they can't do it in the rear. But putting it in the side. Because of existing conditions means that that. Home on the adjacent lot. Is to your point four feet, I would send them to the B C A for a variance to allow it in the rear yard.
Okay, and you'd be leaning into B three. That you didn't give your approval. All right, um. One could read B two as it's currently written. Uh, well, first I would recommend that structures instead be buildings, because if there's like a fence or something that's on the property, we don't care if it's necessarily. From the fence. Um. The back part of that and a minimum of ten feet from window openings and air intake value. Well, what's value is supposed to be?
Oh, intake valves, sorry, and that language came from the A F D.
Yeah, there, there's a whole section in building code on generators and that type of stuff, um, I think that would be more powerful. From. From all window openings, so my my concern there is that because of the. The emissions created by this, we don't care if it's this property or the neighboring property, we still want it to be ten feet from these things. So maybe ten feet from any window openings.
Okay.
Um. Did you? Another little sniggly thing under three. There shouldn't be a comma after zoning administrator, there's no subject uh for that. Uh, I think three I can probably be eliminated because we already find yards in our yard, yard definition section. Um. Um, on to page two twenty seven, B six. So we describe it differently there, we say adjacent residential districts, we're in the next section, we say residentially. Zoned or used.
Land just a second, you're talking about which one, Zach, on two twenty seven?
Uh, roof mounted mechanical equipment shall be setback a minimum of twenty feet from front of the building and any side of the building facing an adjacent residential district.
Okay.
But later on, uh, in C two, we say adjacent to residentially zoned or used property. Is there a reason why they were different or should they be the same?
Where is it? So I'm seeing six.
Yep, C two.
So that it has to be set back twenty feet. And then it it, there's also the requirement for screening. Yes.
Yeah, I guess I'll rephrase the question, is there a reason why in one case we said residential district and the other we said residentially zoned or used?
Oh, I'm sorry, they should be consistent.
Okay. And C two would be the preferred. It's it's a bit.
Yes, residentially used.
Okay, so C six then would change. Um. To do.
Sorry.
No, it's 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 a bit of sniggly stuff, um. Or C one screening. C one, um, so I have a lot of experiences, if anyone's been to Canton, they love screening everything from everything else. Um, so I might offer scratching the or. Or a wall and then adding comma or similar. There may be cases where a lattice works or some something else works that we haven't anticipated.
Okay.
And zoning administrator has that discretion. I would question here. One of the challenges I've encountered is people show that they're gonna do the screening on all sides and they forget they have to have a door where they have to open the cabinet. Um, at least for electrical transformers. Would we be served here to have? Um. I I I guess the question would be, C one, do you feel comfortable in there saying you don't have to put it on this one side because that's where the door is? Or would you like specific language? That says it doesn't have to be screened on the side where the access door is.
I think language could be added if you wanted to screen down three sides.
I'm, I'm throwing out there for discussion. Um, I I don't care, I've just seen that it can be a challenge. Um. I would say on C two, there should be a hyphen between residentially zoned, again, it's compound adjective. Um, right of way hyphens between those. Um. It also seems that if you're adjacent to residentially zoned or used property. That we would also want to add language that. It not just when it's visible from the public right of way, but from the adjacent residentially zoned or used property, so I'm thinking Dexter Crossing. There's the back of the commercial building that's towards the residential area now, there's big pine trees now, but. If there's another case where there might be mechanical equipment. I would like to add that in there, that adjacent to residentially zoned or used property. For the screen. Um, so Zach, you've made so many comments on this, I I'm not sure what. Is staying and not staying, would you like to draft up what you you've proposed so we could see it? I'm only ninety dollars a pound. That's that's a joke, that's my concern. Right, um, yeah, this, this one probably feels like a postponed, but I will I'll get the last one out here. Um. To help folks get better site plans, I would also call for the last sentence in C two to be pulled from here and instead go to section twenty one point oh eight F. Which is the section of things that we want to see on a site plan. Does the folks drafting the site planner, they're gonna look there, they're not necessarily gonna look for screening.
So. The one thing with that is ground mounted, like your electrical transformers. Um. Um, even your air conditioning units. The, when it comes in for final site plan, they don't generally even really know where those are going. I think they do, but. Nine times out of ten, they're in a different place, so what we do is, um. Because the ordinance requires, um. All ground mounted to be screened, when they come in for their zoning compliance, they know at that time where it's gonna be and we, um. Require the flat planes to show them. Um, if they still don't know, we would, we make it a condition of approval. So. Um.
Okay, well, we'll decide when it comes back, I have seen cases where folks. Didn't think about it at all, and then it got out and it's just sitting in the middle of an asphalt parking lot, it's gonna make it by cars and still piles and. Um, so I do like making them think about how they're gonna fit it on.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So so before I request a motion to postpone this. The words in red were there.
Excuse me?
I'm looking at two twenty three.
Twenty three.
You know, your red line thing, you say the text to be added is underlined, I mean, the whole thing is underlined.
Um, yes, yes, it's all new.
It's all new?
For the.
So none, none of this is in our ordinance now?
Not specifically for this. Mechanical. We have a section in landscaping.
So what's promoting, what what what's promoting the need for this, I mean, what what's wrong with?
Because.
I know, and nobody showed up at the public hearing for this.
Nobody showed up at the public hearing.
So what's what's draw, what's driving this?
Contractors who say if it's not in there in the ordinance, they don't have to follow that. And the it's causing problems at the building department, um, and contractors are going out and just putting them in. So.
Putting them in.
Putting in the units without getting. The approvals or the permits from the cabinet.
Is that county or city?
Kind of both. It's a little bit of both.
Because what will happen is they'll put the generator in real close or the HVAC in real close, and now they're violating our sound standards. And the fix is really difficult.
Real close to what?
Too close to property line or house. Well, the property line's meaningless if the house is further away than. And back to your point, if that, I mean, so so I mean, if it's supposed to be a minimum distance away from another house, why don't we just say that? Again, I don't, I don't, I don't. My question, I try, I was letting everybody go first, but. I don't understand why this is here. I I lost the context of what we're, you know, so you you provided a little bit of it, but I mean, if if the concern is. Relative to noise, that it has to be certain distance from a house, we should just say that. Regardless of what side of the property it's on, it doesn't matter if it's on the side or the back.
The the point, the point of being specific in the ordinance is, first thing is that they're in the backyard.
But it doesn't matter if it's if if it, and what's the root cause of what we're trying, what are we trying to solve?
Trying to solve the fact that contractors aren't getting the permits and they're putting in wherever they want.
I don't know if I do wherever they want, I typically when they come out to look, they're trying to put them either close to the gas meter or close to the electric. I know, I know at least, I mean, my next door neighbor had. Side. Right next to their gas. We because the whole question is. For some reason. John Richards built the house, they put the gas meter on one side and they got the electric box on the other. So you either have a lot of wiring or a lot of pipes. So, um. I'm not against, I'm just saying.
Again, I go back to what are we trying to, what are we trying to solve, I mean, we don't.
Well, no, I get, I kind of get what you're saying, I mean, these are getting much more.
You don't have current regulations that regulate ground mounted. We have done it. As best we can using the standards that's in the landscape ordinance currently about screening of mechanical equipment. But. Um.
Good, maybe they have to be provided. When we look at it again, so we know what we're comparing to. I'd like, I'd like to see that if if there's a reference to this elsewhere in the ordinance, I'd like to see that. Does the associations play into this too?
I don't know.
I mean, whether they're gonna be screened or where they're gonna be. I know they do in Dexter Crossing.
Um.
But at least they gotta be screened, anything, all that.
If it, if their bylaws do. Um. Um, they would enforce those. I tried to enforce the screening based on what we currently have. And it's been fairly good. Up to this point, but. We got the the call from the county that. They're having trouble with contractors and that full in permits because there's not specific language. If there's not specific language. They don't come in with the zoning compliance permit and. Then it becoming, I'm chasing. Enforcement action, so. If you don't want to, if you don't want to regulate mechanical equipment. Get, we can.
Has any residents complained? Yeah, that's why, that's why I asked, I don't know what's driving this. Yeah, I just wanted to see any residents complain.
No, residents haven't complained other than the only time that I've gotten a complaint regarding generator noise.
Hmm.
And that this hasn't, doesn't really go into noise very much, it's. More visual. Um, was when Dexter Wellness Center. Put in the mechanical unit at the back. The mechanical unit that was not shown on the final site plan.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'm just surprised that between the gas hook up and the left one, though. I mean. And I do. I don't know how many would do that, I thought. I mean, that.
A lot.
Pardon me?
A lot.
Well, but. The contractor's gonna be responsible for that or the homeowner's. It's not like it's not sitting there, the outside of the house, the next time the assessor comes by and says, hey, we didn't have a generator on the side of the house. The last time we were here and looked at this, I mean. It it's not like they're gonna hide it. So. It's just, it's surprising. I I had somebody come out and look at putting in a generator and I'm like, five people, they all said. Gotta get permits, gotta get it okay with the city, I mean, they all said that.
It, I don't disagree with you, we've had lots of people come through for their zoning compliance, we haven't had any trouble with them. Um, but it only takes one bad apple. And. So, um.
The only other question I had was the five foot separation, is that five feet separation from the house? It says five, I I think it's the structures, but from the, from the house essentially.
Basically. Like the house on which the property that the generator would be located.
I'm just trying to think if that makes sense from what I've seen, or if they tend to be closer than that.
Um, I've seen them closer, but, um. I've had more than one contractor tell me they need at least five feet away for for air circulation.
Okay, and between access, air circulation and. All that stuff, yeah, like.
Okay, so can I get a motion to postpone? I have two more. Two more questions? Yes, sorry, okay. All right, up here, uh, actually one's not a question, it's statement, it's. If we haven't had complaints. Yet, we're lucky, it's coming, generators are getting cheaper. It will happen where I've even had issues where people. Poorly sized their radon. Uh, pump and it just was wheezing and screaming, um, it it will happen. Um, you have a question. Uh. If I were to do a wall mounted heat pump. The exterior exchanger, it doesn't seem like it's covered in here at all.
That what we have on our building, you mean?
I, yeah, it seems like I could put that wherever I want.
We talked about, we talked about that with a planning commission, wall mounted type of, you know, and they thought that was a slippery slope. Because where do you stop? Does that mean that we're going to regulate somebody putting in their window mounted air conditioning unit? It it was not something they felt comfortable getting into, so we stuck with. Ground mounted and roof mounted.
I I would draw a potential stop in point in the future would be for commercial or industrial buildings. Um, having some thoughts of not having to face something that may cause an issue, uh, one thing that was touched here is the sound. And. We ought to dog ear our sound ordinance, it seemed, last time I looked at it, seemed con- unconstitutionally bait for enforcement. Um, and when we touch that. I want to get the pin in the idea of doing an exception for generators when they run over the power outage or during the monthly exercising period within a certain window. Um, otherwise, they're very likely to be outside of what we expect for normal sound.
One of the things that. That. I do as part of zoning compliance is I require the manufacturer's cut sheet. That. Verifies dimensions, um. All kinds of different things on it, um, but it also. Um, provides the decibel level. And. They now have the ones that are super quiet that are. No more than sixty decibels. And so at sixty decibels. That's. That's pretty good. That's, that's less than I've. Than the, um. Blowers and.
Uh, I. Will postpone and the staff would like, you want this remanded to planning commission? Or just staff internal?
We'll go back to planning with whatever you, there's enough. Changes that you go back to.
Okay, that's my motion, postpone and remand to planning commission.
Okay, moved by Michelle's.
My second.
Thank you. Save this session on the postponement.
I just have a comment about, um. The placements on page two twenty six where it says minimum of five feet from the structure and ten feet from windows and openings. So Generex website itself says one point five feet from the house, five feet from doors, windows and fresh air intakes. And three feet in front of the generator for servicing. Dawson'selectric.com says although one point five feet is a minimum distance required by code, most manufacturers have their own specific recommendations. Most state needs to be at least five feet, whatever the manufacturer recommends is what you should do. You might avoid the warranty if you don't. But then also says states and local municipalities will have their own specific requirements. Many local codes do the within five feet from property line. Anyways, I guess. I would consider revisiting. Those specifics unless they were based on some. Other code or whatever. I mean, if somebody is in a tight space and if the manufacturer is saying. You can, and, and the other code is saying it can be within one and a half feet. I mean, my sense of when I've seen these, they're not. They're, they do seem closer to the house than five feet. And so I guess I would ask to revise that in a way that. Obviously it's still safe, um. I don't know if you say meet the requirements of your manufacturer and like they need to show what I'd like to mention. I don't know.
Zach, so the, the minimum requirements, um, are kind of baked into building code plus the manufacturer may require a bit bigger. Building code, I, I like to describe, it's making sure that your building doesn't kill you or you don't burn your building down. Uh, whereas zoning. Is making sure you don't harm the people around you. So zoning often requires a bit bigger distance with the thought. If something does go wrong and emergency responders have to get around, they're not going to be able to fit through a one and a half foot gap with all their gear and stuff on. So the idea is to provide a larger alleyway for people to get around. And that's usually why it's bigger than what building code is in zoning.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone in a second. Please, please call the vote to postpone.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes.
Motion carries to postpone. Uh, we have, we have brought K two down to M six. So we are on M six, which is formerly K two, resolution directed in the execution of contract twenty four dash five zero one one. With M dot for the Baker Road Reserving Project. Zach, you asked us to be pulled off. Do you want to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll move it.
Okay, moved by Michelle's. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Summer Pharaoh, thank you. Okay, Zach, your question?
Yeah, my question for every contract, I didn't see it in here. Has this been reviewed by the city attorney?
Uh, this is. So this is standard FM doc contract. Um, it's, it's to take it or leave it.
Okay, um, I guess. Well, I'll have some detailed questions then. Um. Do we know on page sixty, part A, the federal participation, does that include the crosswalks or is that a part B thing? Part A includes the ramps, but we have the special treatment for our crosswalks.
Marcus? Josh, I don't know. You have to.
Yeah, good evening, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Decorative concrete is under non-fetter.
Yeah, the, the non-participating items are primarily the, um, parking lanes. The decorative crosswalk treatment and the hydrant relocation at Baker to get it out of the turn radius of vehicles. Those are the, that, that primarily makes up the eighty thousand inch change.
Thank you, but I just didn't see it in there. I wanted to know where laid. On page sixty two. Uh, I understand take it or leave it, but are we able to get turnaround thirty days from when we receive it to when we're paid it out? Yes. Okay, um, one thing I didn't see in here, and maybe it's because of the vintage of these documents, although some of them. Are updated. I didn't see any language that references Iranian related in, uh, entities for financing. I know that's been a right, uh, requirement that we not do business with as a government entity with folks who do business with Iranian entities.
Well, Marcus, I mean, uh, it, it.
Not the contract.
Yeah, that's in the construction contract that I'm, because I'm, we provide them the plan and specifications. They provide all the front end contractual documents. That is in those contract documents with the contractor.
All right, um, I guess one of my other questions would be if all of these references to CFR and other regulations have been reviewed and updated. I guess since it's take it or leave it, that doesn't really matter. On page seventy six. Is the place we really send this to the Michigan Department of Education? Sign seems kind of weird for a construction contract.
We do everything for, um. M doc contracts through project wise, which is their online portal. So we don't actually mail anything anymore. So where that gets distributed internal, I'm not, I couldn't tell you, um. But we've always sent stuff in through that portal and it gets to the right people.
Okay. Um, now, one of the problems we had on third. And broad was they kind of disappeared for. A number of months left the projects partially finished. This doesn't appear to address that. Is that something we do separately? Or are we still kind of at the mercy of whatever they want to do whenever they want to do it because it's a, a project through M dots letting?
Dustin, I can take this again if you'd like.
Yeah.
Um, th- this contract. Yeah, this contract, uh, has a construction window, uh, basically, um, from June fifteenth to August fifteenth. Those might not be the exact date, but basically when school's out. The issue on the third and broad project was. Was bigger than that. I mean, the contractor was difficult. Uh, the low bid, um. For this project is Cadillac Asphalt, who you may know has done. A fair amount of work in the city, most recently Dan Howie. Um, they are pretty well known for. When they start a project, they want to get it knocked out. Um, but the contract. Term itself is middle of June to middle of August. Um, and, and no, there's not a provision in there. Um, that says that they can only have it closed for X number of days within that window. Okay, we don't expect to have an issue with this contractor.
Okay, but, but we could have a situation where they got a bigger project that pops up and we have Baker sitting partially usable or unusable. For a couple of weeks. Potentially, not, not likely, but potentially.
Yeah, and anything's possible. The, the issue you run into that would, if you really squeeze down the construction. Uh, windows that you allow, it just price up and it actually, um, it, it'll do two things. It'll drive the price up and limit bidders. Depending on what they have on their books. Um, so we, we thought the, we, we don't expect the, the road to be closed for three months, um. But I mean, it is possible under the terms of the contract that they could do that and, and not be penalized. But again, don't expect that.
All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Any other questions on the counter? Okay, George, please spell the vote.
Aldag?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes, motion carries. That concludes our new business. Uh, we are down to non arranged participation. Is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening? So please use the raise hand feature. Not seeing anyone, anyone in the audience like to speak under non arranged. Okay, council comments. Bonnie's left us. Zach, we'll start with you today. Pass.
I just have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Uh. I guess with my questionnaire design experience, uh. I mean, a truly neutral statement. Would use both endpoints, neither agree nor disagree. Neither favor nor oppose, so. Perhaps if people are interested in reconsidering the language in that resolution. And they felt strongly about. Keeping that line in there. You would consider. Neither favors nor opposes to make it crystal clear. I think also just a general reminder that even when local tax dollars. Aren't being used to fund a local project and we're seeking federal tax dollars. People are still paying taxes. For that project. It's just a more distant, uh, mechanism for doing that, um. And I also couldn't help but notice the irony. I mean, and I appreciate the frustration that Councilmember Summer Pharaoh expressed. When you have a developer who's not honoring the terms of. The, the bylaws. And I would just invite everybody here to consider whether or not. There might be residents in this community or other, or others. Um, local, state, federal, who feel the same way. Oftentimes. People in positions of power or, you know, who have an agreement. They might do whatever they want and it's. Only it's good at the enforcement of it and that oftentimes requires legal action, um. And I guess that's just the way it works that. Need to involve the legal system. And it's unfortunate and I appreciate the frustration. Thank you.
Thank you. Son?
Um, when the staff have a chance, if you can fix the clock up there, I would appreciate. Um, nothing, thank you.
Yeah, no time. Wow.
Uh, this may be a little bit off topic, but, um. It, it'll get back to Dexter. I mean, I feel like the national conversation around women's athletics is changing. Uh, a hundred years ago, for example, five percent of Olympians were women. This year it's finally going to be fifty fifty. Um, all of that is to say that women have always been athletes. We've always been competitive. And I will be attending the women's waterfall home opener next week. And all of this starts at home. Support your women, your, your young women in high school. Um, as they. You know, play their sports the same way that we support our young men. I think it's, uh, something that needs to happen.
Okay, are there any proposed agenda items to be added to? As potential for future meetings. Seeing now, I'll see the motion for German at ten oh two or nine oh two on the clap on the left. All's in favor? Motion by Hubbard? Second by Dan?
Yep.
Okay, all the favors. Everybody have a good St. Patrick's Day.